Can I have a motion to call the meeting to order? Moved by Commissioner Hassan, second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Motion passes one, two, three, four, five, seven. Andy, you good? Seven zero with two absent. I'd like to ask everybody to please rise for the presentation of colors and the playing Apologize, but I don't have the students' names. And also, the awesome student performers from the Reginald F. Lewis Band, and the direction of Mr. Jahi Robinson. Thanks, Mr. Robinson. Student performers were Taylor Green, Rihanna Mason, Deja Coles, Brianna Jones, Joanna Santos, Cameron Balianis, Tim Nadya Bradley, John Powell, Devonte Rogers, Dwight Jordan, Varion Berry, Alexander Lewis, Mark James, Demias Smith, Angel Hill, DiJera Kuntz, Destiny Forrest, and Deshaun Bullock Brody. I'd now like to turn it over to Commissioner Frank to lead us in a moment of silence.
I would like to take this time to recognize the passing of several city school employees. Each of these individuals was committed to supporting our students through their work. They will be remembered fondly by the greater city schools community. Tonight, we send our deepest condolences to their friends and families. It's with deep regret we inform you of the passing of John Johnson, who served in city schools for 20 years as a Lead One Labor Crew in our ground shop. Mr. Johnson departed on March 25, 2019, and will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and city schools. It's with deep regret we inform you of the passing of Yvonne McLean, who served in city schools for 23 years as an Assistant Transportation Customer Care. Ms. McLean unfortunately passed on March 25, 2019, and will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and the city schools' family. It is with deep regret we inform you of the passing of Richard Segras, who served in city schools for five years as a teacher. Mr. Segras unfortunately departed on March 29, 2019, and will be missed greatly by his family, friends, and city schools. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I'd also like to acknowledge one of our board members, Vernon Reed, could not be with us tonight because of the sudden passing of his wife, Rosalind Plummer Reed. So please extend your thoughts to Mr. Reed and his family. I'd like to have a motion to approve both the prior open session minutes and the closed session summaries. Moved by Commissioner Berkeley, second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, are you going to vote for the minutes? Bondima, another controversy. Chinia, Kashani, Frank, and Berkeley, motion passes seven zero. Because of the spring break, and the timing of the calendar, the committees have not the operations policy and teaching and learning have not met since the last board meeting. But I would like to ask Commissioner Bondima to give us a brief update from the MAAB Legislative Committee.
Well, the MAAB, basically, we haven't met since the last meeting. We will be meeting May, next Monday.
Oh, okay.
It's the next meeting for me. And so I will be reporting the results of that meeting.
Terrific, okay.
I reported the last meeting for me.
Okay, got it.
Thank you very much.
The only other, well, two things. I'm going to acknowledge a gift of $26,460 worth of "We Speak for Ourselves" books from author Dee Watkins, culturally relevant materials that will help students discover the power of critical thinking, and for students to build their own library, and a celebratory nacho party at a set of schools. These schools include the Baltimore Design School, Burgin-Thaller High School, National Academy Foundation, Baltimore School for the Arts, Patterson High School, Forest Park High School, Coppin Academy High School, Connections, a community-based art school, Carver Vocational Technical High School, City Springs Elementary Middle School, Holliburton Academy, Vanniger-Blake Academy for the Arts and Sciences, Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, Baltimore City College, and James McHenry Elementary Middle School. So we really appreciate the contributions from Mr. Watkins. We have one retirement to note. We'd like to acknowledge the service of people who have served for 30 years or more. And Michael Haney began working with Baltimore City Public Schools on October 15, 1979. It says she most recently served, I think Michael's a he. Michael's a he. I know, yeah. Anyway. He most recently, I just want to make sure, he most recently served as manager, Treasury for Fiscal Management. Michael faithfully served the children of Baltimore City Public Schools for 39.5 years. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Is he here?
Is Mr. Haney here?
He is here? That's a real bummer. Well, thank you. Please let him know that's a lot of years to serve city schools. We have no appeals and hearings tonight to vote on, so I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the PEP agenda. Moved by Commissioner Frank. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Chinia, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Frank, Berkeley, motion passes seven zero. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the CEO for her comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Kashani. Chief Grant Skinner, am I correct that, okay, great. So we do have, if you could come forward for the PEP agenda, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. And Dr. Santalisa, so we have one appointment this evening, and I believe she is here with us. Kathryn Meath, currently teacher, elementary teacher at the Mount Washington School, is appointed Academic Content Liaison effective July 1.
You can stand? She's like, I really don't want to.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief Grant Skinner, and congratulations. So, good evening, everyone. I will say, I do feel rested. Let's hope at the end of this board meeting, I continue to channel the rest from last week. But in the spirit of just having completed spring break, hopefully other folks had a chance to breathe as well, just want to make sure that everyone's aware that on March 29, the Maryland General Assembly passed and enacted the Community Control of School Calendars Act, which allows public school districts to basically set start and end dates each year for their schools, effective July 1, 2019. This bill directly repeals any restrictions on local control over academic calendars. City Schools was very much in favor of this legislation, and we are grateful to our state legislators for their support for district control over issues such as this. Now, for this year, in order to preserve necessary school readiness plans, we have had a flood both through the board office, as well through the CEO's office, of different kind of questions about what will happen this year. So tonight, I want to make sure that families and the community at large know that for this year, when we took a look at the timing of when that decision was made, a number of families have already made plans. We know that staff, it's actually too compressed a time period. And so really, to avoid any disruption in academic preparation for this school year, City Schools will continue to maintain our post-Labor Day start for this coming school year. So for school year 2019-20, we should all plan to begin on Tuesday, the first day of school, I'll begin before that. The first day of school will be Tuesday, September 3, the day after Labor Day. In addition, staff is recommending updating the academic calendar for next year to update the inclement weather recovery plan. And as everyone knows, depending on the weather, in kind of plain talk, depending on the weather and how many days we have, we may need to adjust the end of the year, calendar end, based on how many inclement weather days we have to take during the course of the school year. So, in subsequent years, beginning in school year 2021, we are going to be, in planning for those subsequent years, I should say, we are going to be asking for additional feedback, particularly from city schools' families and staff, before we make any decision about moving back to a late-August start date. So we want to flag for families and for the general public, but particularly for staff and city schools' families, that we will be asking feedback. There are a number of other school districts throughout the state who are doing similarly. The thinking really is that this would be a good time to just evaluate where we believe that we are, and get a sense from the community of whether a return to the late-August start date makes the most sense. And the same will be said in terms of how we solicit feedback from staff. Last spring, I had the honor of meeting with a group of, if my memory is correct, about five or seven African-American teachers in the district, who I think very courageously asked for a meeting. And I only say courageously, not because I'm anybody special, but sometimes when you're in a classroom and you ask for a meeting with the head of a school system, it cannot necessarily be an easy thing to do. And so I say that last spring, courageously, I had the chance to meet with a group of African-American teachers who were contemplating leaving the district. And that conversation enabled me, I think, to really get a sense from the front lines, from just that small group experience, just how pertinent of an issue, and a present issue. We knew it was an issue, but how important and immediate an issue it was that we needed to address as a school system. And fortunately for us, we were able to work in collaboration. We invited staff and community members really to participate in a new working group. And a group of African-American teachers throughout the district really formed a working group that was focused not only on the recruitment of Black teachers, which in and of itself is worthy of great reflection and frankly changes to how we do business, but also the retention of Black teachers. And so we know that this is an important issue, not only in city schools, but based on some of my own research and work nationally with Education Trust. This is basically a nationwide issue. And so this group, and I'm excited for them to issue their public report, they're preparing to issue that with their findings and recommendations. And so I would like to invite them to share a preview of their work so far. And so joining Chief Grant Skinner to provide an update, I'd like to invite Christina Duncan-Evans, Charlamare Douglas, and Lisa Smith Sherrod. Did I say Sherrod, or is it Sherrod?
Sherrod.
All right, sorry about that. Okay. To come forth and to share your findings, your work, your progress thus far. This is, in my mind, this is not kind of a temporary work group, this is an ongoing group, and this is their first report. And I will just signal out that, and I don't think she will mind if I say this, if she does, I'm sure she will shoot me a dirty look, but that it was Christina Duncan-Evans who actually was the one who first asked for the meeting, and said to me, I think you really need to hear from a group of Black teachers who are thinking about leaving the district, because I don't think it has to be this way. So I want to thank her again for her leadership on that. And I will turn it over to you all.
Thank you, Madam CEO. Thank you, members of the board. We are really excited to share with you an update of our work since we launched in last July. So, the Black Teacher Recruitment and Retention Working Group consists of a number of people with different experiences in the classroom, outside the classroom, in the leadership space, in the advocacy space. And our goal was really to take a multifaceted look at this issue, to really dig deep on what is propelling the retention, sorry, the attrition of Black teachers in the district. These names represent the core team members who have organized the monthly activities of the Black Teacher Recruitment and Retention Working Group. Early on, we realized that this was a big conversation. And so while we have a series of public meetings, we have a smaller group that steers the work, inputs the feedback, really analyzes and strategizes around what we're hearing from the public. And tonight, you're also going to hear from three other core team members, in addition to myself, Tracy, Lisa, and Jeremy. So, the next slide features an image of us working. This was one of our longer meetings. We had a couple of meetings that spanned four to six hours, because when we got into this work, we found that it was really, really complicated. And we needed to meet more than on a monthly basis to really get our heads around it and do something that would make all of us feel proud. So, just for some background, our history as a group really goes back to the board testimony provided in February 2018 by Teachers Democracy Project, Edwin Green, Dr. Khalila Harris, and the Baltimore Movement of Rank-and-File Educators during the Black Lives Matter Week of Action in Schools. Rebecca Yinewyn and Edwin Green both made public comments to the board on behalf of these groups and individuals. And these comments came in the midst of a good deal of organizing conversation and activism, both inside schools and outside schools. Following this, Chief Grant Skinner reached out to discuss the Human Capital Office's interest in working together with us and others to explore ways to increase the number of Black teachers in city schools. And I'd like to pause here and really thank Chief Grant Skinner, because the commitment that he's shown in terms of the time, the resources, and the dedication that he has put into this project has really been unwavering and full-throated. And it has been a partnership with city schools that I have had just such a positive feeling about. After a few planning meetings, Dr. Santalisa announced that a 12-month working group would commence at the June 2018 board meeting, and she invited anyone who was interested to join us. So as soon as we began, we wanted to really set clear goals and objectives, and so we created a statement of purpose that grounds us in the context and in some core understandings. We know both anecdotally and from education research that Black teachers matter immensely for Black students, but they also matter for all students. Social and academic achievement of Black students increases when they have models of leadership, when they have role models with whom they can identify. In city schools, we had a very precipitous decline, and a persistent gap remains, even though some significant ground has been made up between the percentage of teachers of colors who are Black and the percentage of students who are Black. So, one of the contributing factors, a major underlying factor, is systemic racism. We cannot ignore that we live and work within institutions that maintain, uphold, and transfer institutionalized racism across generations. And so our responsibility to take a critical look at our institutions and our roles in them is one that I very much welcome, and I'm glad to see city schools is really committed to that. So, every phase of a teacher's career, including pathways into teaching, certification, career pathways, requirements, mentoring experiences, working conditions, are all affected by the wider context of systemic racism, which makes this a tricky thing to focus on, but at the same time, that context can't be ignored. And then finally, I'll state our goals specifically and read them from the slide. The Black Teacher Recruitment and Retention Working Group's goals are to hear and share Black teachers' perspectives and experiences in Baltimore City, investigate causes for the gap, and create recommendations for district leaders to recruit and retain quality Black teachers, so that city schools will have a teaching population that reflects the students we serve.
We wanted to share a bit of data here. I will say that the teaching and board members who serve on the Teaching and Learning Committee saw a bit more data back last September, after the working group started meeting. And I just wanted to share a couple of these today. So Christina mentioned a precipitous drop. So I will say, you see that here between 2003 and 2010. So the gray bar in each case represents the percentage of teachers who identified as Black or African-American each of these years, and the blue bar reflects the percentage of students who are Black. So in 2003, a little more, a bit more than 60% of our teachers were Black compared to almost 90% of our students. So you saw a difference there of about 26%. We really came together in part because of the change that you see from then to 2010, where that gap almost doubled. We have, as Christina said, made up some ground, and we came together because we want to make sure that that gap closes even more.
By the way, if I could just interject on that, that data that the group surfaced for me was one of the largest surprises when I left the district as CEO. And looking at, to use you all's terms, the precipitous decline that occurred just within the three years that I left the district and returned, to me was one of the biggest surprises, given the fact that, having come from systems that had even smaller percentages of Black teachers, I had, and I will just say this forthrightly, because it was a mistake on my part, I had assumed that we would have been increasing, rather than decreasing or at least maintaining. And so I think the fact that we are monitoring this data more closely than we had been in the past is something that we need to continue regardless of who's sitting in any of these seats. It needs to become an ongoing data point that we're monitoring. But I just wanted to say, for me, that was one of the bigger surprises, in the fact that I never would have thought in three years it would have declined that precipitously that it did. Sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick picture of Black male teachers. This shows that 10% of our teachers currently are Black men, and that compares to about 2% nationally. And actually, I'm not sure there's another district in the country that has 10%. And, at the same time, that is very different from our student population, where 40% of our students are Black boys and young men. And then, just a few other bullets to give a snapshot about our demographics. So, the first bullet calls out that about 85% of our paraeducators are Black. The next bullet names that despite that drop, we have made some progress. So we actually have more Black teacher, a higher percentage of Black teachers today than any time in the last 10 years. Looking back during that time when there was a drop, we can see that recruitment was a part of the problem. So for nine straight years, fewer than 40% of new teachers hired into the district were Black. So from 2006 to 2014, every year, the percentage of new teachers who were Black was under 40%. In two of the last three years, that number was 50%, and that's the only two times it's been 50% since 2004. The second to last bullet, just to put into context about retention in general, so actually, for many years now, and for most years, going back even to 2003, we actually retained more of our Black teachers than our other teachers. That, for us as a working group, did not mean that we don't need to explore why Black teachers are leaving. And part of our work was to figure out what are the unique things that may cause Black teachers to leave, as we have this focus. The final bullet is just calling out that this is something that we need to further explore at the school level. much welcome, and I'm glad to see city schools, um, is, is really committed to that. So every phase of a teacher's career, including pathways into teaching, certification, career pathways, requirements, mentoring experiences, working conditions, are all affected by the wider context of systemic racism, which makes this a tricky thing to focus on, um, but at the same time, that context can't be ignored. And then finally, I'll state our goals specifically and read them from the slide. The Black Teacher Recruitment and Retention Working Group's goals are to hear and share Black teachers' perspectives and experiences in Baltimore City, investigate causes for the gap, and create recommendations for district leaders to recruit and retain quality Black teachers so that city schools will have a teaching population that reflects the students we serve.
We wanted to share a bit of data here. I will say that the teaching and board members who serve on the Teaching and Learning Committee saw a bit more data back last September after the working group started, um, meeting. Um, and I just wanted to share, uh, a couple of these today. So Christina mentioned a precipitous drop. Um, so I will say, you see that here between 2003 and 2010. Um, and so the gray bar in each case represents the percentage of teachers who identified as Black or African-American at each of these years, and the blue bar reflects, uh, the percentage of students who are Black. Uh, so in 2003, um, a little more, a bit more than 60% of our teachers were Black, um, compared to almost 90% of our students. So you saw a difference there of about 26%. Uh, we really came together in part because of this, the change that you see from then to 2010, where that gap almost doubled. Um, we have, as Christina said, made up some ground, and we came together because we want to make sure that that gap closes even more.
By the way, if I could, if I could just interject on that, one of the, that data that the group surfaced for me was one of the largest surprises when I left the district, um, as CEO, and looking at, to, to use you all's terms, the precipitous decline that occurred just within the three years that I left the district and returned, um, to me was one of the biggest surprises, given the fact that, um, having come from systems that had even smaller percentages of Black teachers, I had, and I will just say this forthrightly because it was a mistake on my part, I had assumed that we would have been increasing rather than decreasing or at least maintaining. And so I think the fact that we are monitoring this data more closely than we had been in the past is something that we need to continue regardless of who's sitting in any of these seats. It needs to become an ongoing data point, um, that, that we're monitoring. But I just wanted to say, for me, that was one of the, one of the bigger surprises, um, in the fact that I never would have thought in three years it would have declined that precipitously that it did. Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick picture of, uh, Black male teachers. Uh, this shows that 10% of our teachers currently are Black, Black men. Um, and, uh, that compares to about 2% nationally. And actually, I'm not sure there's another district in the country that has 10%. Um, and, at the same time, that is very different from our student population, where 40% of our students are, are Black boys and young men. And then, just a few other, other bullets to give a snapshot about our demographics. Um, so, uh, the first bullet calls out that about 85% of our paraeducators are Black. Um, the next bullet names that, uh, despite that drop, we have made some progress. So we actually have more Black teacher, a higher percentage of Black teachers today than any time in the last 10 years. Um, uh, looking back during that time when there was a drop, we can see that recruitment was a part of the problem. So for nine straight years, uh, fewer than 40% of new teachers hired into the district were Black. So from 2006 to 2014, every year, uh, the percentage of new teachers who were Black was under 40%. Um, in two of the last three years, that number was 50%, and that's the only two times it's been 50% since 2004. Um, the second to last bullet, just to put into context about retention in general, so actually, um, for many years now, and for most years, going back even to 2003, um, we actually retained more of our Black teachers than our other teachers. Um, that, for us as a working group, did not mean that we don't need to explore why Black teachers are leaving. Um, and part of our work was to figure out what are the unique things that may cause Black teachers to leave as we have this focus. Um, the final bullet is just calling out that, that this is, uh, something that, um, we need to further explore at the school level. Um, so there are, uh, about 30 schools where there is a greater than 34% gap, um, between the, between Black teachers and Black students. Um, on the other end, we have, uh, only 16 schools where the, their, the, the teaching population actually has more, um, Black representation than the student population.
Let me hold the paper a second. Okay. So far, since last July, 250 individuals have engaged with the working group by attending at least one of our public meetings. These have been teachers, prospective teachers, other educators, advocates, partner organization, and other community meetings. Here's a picture of the public meetings we held, so we've held so far and the main topics we explored at each meeting. Lisa and Anthony from the school's office arranged us to hold our public meetings in different places throughout the city, rather than holding them all here at the central office, which allowed us to just see how vast, um, one, the city is. Places that you don't think are the city is the city. Um, so, yeah. Um, in addition to other public meetings, the district hosted a special event featuring Dr. Ashley Griffin from Education Trust in November, where the panel also included 2018 School City Schools' Teacher of the Year, Laquisha Hall, and 2019 School Teacher of the Year finalist, Kaier Butts. There was a one-year later Black Teachers Matter event in February hosted by Teachers Democracy Project, and just a few, few weeks ago, the working group hosted an online discussion as a part of the weekly Be More Ed Chat series hosted by 2017 City Schools' Teacher of the Year, Justin Holbrook. We have two remaining public meetings on April 30th. We'll explore employee evaluations, including how principals expect, are expected to support and retain teachers, and that meeting will be at Violetville. On May 21st, we will revisit a couple of our other topics, particularly mentoring and the student-to-teacher pipeline. Anyone can attend these meetings, come to these meetings, and you don't need to have any background from any previous meetings in order to participate.
The students and paraeducator pipelines, the work group has been broken into different task force. And one of our task forces is looking at increasing the number of teachers through creating pipelines. And one of those pipelines is looking at our students and looking at creating a desire in Baltimore City School students to become teachers. And so one of our task forces has looked at giving opportunities to students to increase, ways for them to look at becoming teachers in the future through, uh, opportunities offered by MSDE and other colleges and universities in Maryland. Additionally, paraeducators, we've looked at opportunities for paraeducators to further their education as well as becoming, uh, teachers here in city schools.
The other area we have focused on is teacher certification. We knew that teacher certification was a barrier for individuals, um, interested in becoming teachers and for teachers, for our own teachers who want to remain in the profession. During this course of these public meetings, um, we've had, we've had to think about the Kerwin Commission and the Maryland State Department of Education, who were also making some changes to the certification process. Um, and so we had lots of discussions around that. We held three specific meetings about certification. Um, so the working group has advocated to both Kerwin and MSDE, urging them to consider ways to base certification requirements on actual teacher practice and rely less on tests, um, for which passage has, has no demonstrated connection to ability to teach effectively. Um, and I also can just say that we are, um, some of us are meeting with MSDE this week just to get a more understanding of what the certification process that's being rolled out, that hasn't gone into regulatory language yet, um, for us to just, to see where there is alignment and concern, and particularly for our Black teachers.
Okay. Um, the Teacher and Mentoring Task Force has been working, um, throughout the school year to develop a plan to increase the mentoring and support for new teachers here in the district. And so we've been working with the Human Capital Office just to create a more robust opportunity for new teachers. We found that teachers that are traditionally certified do not have the same support, uh, as teachers that come into the district through alternative certification programs. Our traditionally certified teachers do not have cohorts that they can count on and work with. And so we're looking at providing cohort models for these teachers that they can work with in their content areas. We have CTE teachers that, uh, feel like they are left alone, that they feel like they do not have support in their content areas. They might be coming into the district from outside careers, and they don't have any teaching experience, although they have expertise in their particular fields. And so we're looking at providing them mentoring and cohort models in order for them to have support. Also, we're looking at providing mentoring groups within our school, we're providing full-time mentors within our schools that have the highest teacher turnover and the lowest student achievement. And so that is something that the Human Capital Office has committed to working with the members of the Mentoring Task Force to be able to provide, to increase Blacks, Black teacher retention, um, and to meet the needs of our Black teachers.
The other task force, the data, uh, the data and research, um, I'm going to say committee, committee, um, which I was a part of and really excited about being a part of. It was a stretch for me to try to do data, like, you know, people talk about data in a particular way, and I, like, wanted to, like, talk about it in that way, but also to bring another lens to, like, how we collect data. Um, so one of the group's task force, um, one of the group's task forces decided to help the district develop new surveys for collecting information from teachers about their experiences with city schools. This included a survey of already exited teachers, an exit survey for future use, and a survey of all current teachers to capture factors that make teachers likely to stay and factors that make teachers likely to leave. In February and March 2019, we collected data from 3,669 of our 4,882 teachers, people who are in teacher roles. They completed the survey. Um, and so now we have information that we can analyze, and we can see what the differences are in experience and factors, um, and we can disaggregate that data, um, in different ways. And here, I'd like to give Jeremy again another shout-out. Jeremy was on that task force, and, um, we were able to, with his support, have this survey attached to the Declaration of Intent. And so that ensured that more people would complete it than if it wasn't attached to anything. So we were able to get, um, answers to questions that we had in the surveys that we are now going to be able to just really dig deeply into to see reasons why people stay and reasons why people leave, and then take that and do all kinds of wonderful things with it. And then, in future, in the future, have some baseline data to look at so we can understand some trends.
We hope that these very quick summaries give the board and the public a sense of the group's work over the, um, or since last summer. And after our remaining meetings on April 30th and May 21st, we will be completing our report with recommendations to district leaders, um, that we have named in our statement of purpose and the group's anticipated deliverables. Please hold the date of June 18th from 5:30 to 7:30 here, right here in this boardroom, um, for a report to recognize the contributions of the Black Teacher Recruitment and Retention Work Group. Thank you.
Thank you all for that presentation, and I want to just commend the work of our CEO, of our Chief Human Capital Officer, um, Chief Grant Skinner, who I also pay attention to in the, um, the Twitter chats, the Wednesday Be More. I mean, it's a great opportunity. And when we think about, um, innovative ways to engage our community, I think that is one. So I want to applaud Chief Grant Skinner for the work that you are leading. You're not just the tyrant at the helm, but you're also participating in the work. So I applaud you for that. I also want to applaud our district and the work that you all are doing. In my work that I do throughout the state, um, and the circles that I am in nationally, there isn't really work happening like this in districts like ours. So hopefully, um, we'll be able to serve as a model for other school districts around the country, um, because teacher, teacher recruitment and retention is an issue outside of Black teacher recruitment. And then when we layer on Black teachers also, it's an issue. So I just want to say thank you for being models and the leaders, not just for us figuring this out in Baltimore, but also throughout the rest of the country. I just want to say thank you. My question now is, do you all have data speaking to, uh, the differences or the difference between teachers of color passing the praxis, Black teachers particularly, and teachers that are not of color, teachers that are not Black, um, that are passing the praxis? What are those rates? And what potentially, I know you all are going to give these recommendations in a couple of months, but what potentially could be some strategies to kind of help with the praxis preparation, um, for certification? I know you all were talking about, and this is news, um, about MSDE changing criteria for certification. Are there talks about this right now? The, uh, I can say the inequity between those who pass the praxis and those who don't pass the praxis. So do we, you all have that information? Or could it be something that we, um, talk about further within these, um, recommendations?
We do have that data. Um, it's Urban Teachers, right, that's in our office in Human?
Baltimore City Teacher Residency.
Baltimore Teacher Residency. They presented that information at one of our public meetings, um, regarding the numbers of people of color, and then more specifically, Black teachers, um, and then non, um, people of color. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but we do have those, and we do know nationally that this is, um, a challenge. Um, and with what MSDE and Kerwin are proposing, um, so it's a, it's not just praxis, it's like they're changing the pathways to teaching.
Teacher education.
Yeah, the pathways for teachers. So they're limit, they're narrowing it so we don't have, like, I think we're going from 14 to, like, now, seven or eight. So that's kind of good for us. So, you know, people know where they are and then where they can go. Um, the test, making it clear to people that there are different tests. If, like, if you don't pass, um, praxis, you can use your GRE scores, you can use your SAT scores, you can use your ACT scores. A lot of people don't know that. Um, so making that clear to people that those are scores, we're, at a certain level, that those are scores that exempt, that will be acceptable for praxis.
Praxis one.
Praxis one. And then, um, today at the state board meeting, and I need to go back and listen to it, but Sarah and I were talking about that, it's, it sounds like a 3.0 GPA will exempt a person from having to take the praxis.
This is new.
This is as of today's meeting with MSDE. So I'm going to, we're going to go back and listen to it, and we don't know if that's for all or if that's just for alt. But if the praxis one is the, the basic praxis is the one where we have the challenge.
The most challenged.
And it's the area of math where people, um, struggle.
And while praxis is very much in the forefront of people's minds as a barrier to entry, um, it is, in some ways, because it's created by ETS out of our hands. I think we can also take a look at some barriers to advancement that are internal. So for instance, while there's certainly barrier or rather discrep, uh, there are disparities in practice achievement, there's also a set of disparities in our model teacher process. The cohort of teachers that finishes the model teacher process and the cohort of teachers that is approved as model teachers is both wider than the population as a whole.
So that's, you all are pulling together that also within your recommendations and results in June?
I've got Commissioner Chinia as a, as a direct follow-up to this, and then I think I've got Commissioner Bondima after that.
Yeah, I, just because you, you're sort of on the track, talking about certification and the testing, and, and, um, I just want to be certain. I know that you, you, you mentioned, uh, the state board. Uh, Maryland has two boards that deal with certification. And so I would also encourage you, uh, the Professional Standards Teacher Education Board, that meets the first Thursday of every month. I'm on that board, represent, uh, MAVE in our system. But, uh, please, uh, also look to see what's happening there. By 2025, most of what we're talking about will have changed completely. And so to the extent that we can begin to, to, um, really advocate for the kinds of changes that you want now would be very important. Maryland is a state that, that import, yeah, uh, almost 60% of our teachers. So, um, I think it would be important to have your voices at both of those, both those places.
Commissioner Bondima?
Thank you, and I really appreciate everything that you've done, and because it requires a lot of work, a lot of research, and it's very interesting. But I'm coming to you from a different angle, more of a, of K through 12 to a higher education. And I wanted to share with you something that we need to look at. I'm looking at us growing our own. So this is another piece. And I don't know, some of you look so young. I don't know if some, maybe, um, Ms. Commissioner Chinia might remember, we had a program at Morgan State University called Project Prime. Remember Project Prime? Programs to recruit and inspire minorities into education. And this was funded by DeWitt Wallace Reader's Digest. They have companies and organizations that have funding, and, um, I don't, you're, you're adding a lot of work to what you're already doing. I don't even know if you have someone who could take that task and look for grants, because they do have grants that will work, because it's a hard-to-hire, great need for teachers. And what we did and can do again, and they're doing it in other cities, we can, we can go into the schools and start programs, clubs, organizations with some funding, and grow our own students to go into education. And out of that program, we turned out about 25 teachers who are still some, well, I can't say all in, still in the system, but you, I think you might be familiar with that. We had programmed in different schools, and those students had all-year programs, and we worked with them on everything. And I think that even though we, you're doing this great part on one side, we have to think about it on the other side. Grow our own teachers. And that way, we can make sure that they're highly qualified to work with our students in Baltimore City, because I'm really disturbed about the fact that that percentage of teachers, African-American teachers, are working with that large percentage of African-American students. And I'm not just leaving this with you, I am saying to you that I would be willing to assist you in searching. It's, it would, it requires some research to find these companies and organizations who are invested, maybe the Gates Foundation, whatever, who's willing to put out their money. And Reader's Digest did this, DeWitt Wallace, at one point. So, um, we can, that's another direction that we can work on. High school kids who are, um, anxious to become teachers, and we do have some of those students like that. So, um, I would encourage you to, you know, go into your data, your research, and pull up and look, and, I don't know who you could find to do that because it's extra work, but I would encourage you to do that.
So we currently do have a member of our team that is working on that, and, um, Western High School actually has a CTE program.
They started with DeWitt Wallace. That is a DeWitt Wallace Reader's Digest program that moved into that direction. That's where it came from.
And so we'll continue, we'll continue to work with that, and if you don't mind, we'll reach out to you for some.
Oh, yes. It was not only at, um, it was at several schools. It was at Patterson, it was at, um, Mergenthala, it was at different schools, and teachers were involved, students were involved, and, of course, the principal. But, um, I think that that would be a wonderful addition to the work, the hard work that you're doing. Okay?
Could you repeat your name, please?
Name? Dr. Bondima Michelle Harris-Bondima.
And Chief Grant Skinner will know how to find her.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And it was again, uh, June 8, you said June 18th, Christina? And, uh, the location is here for that?
Yes.
I'll make a note of that for the end of it. I'll make a note of that for the end of it.
And again, just emphasizing also the power of teachers actually proactively addressing challenges that we have. And I also look forward to hearing the recommendations, as I think was pointed out, for not just externally what needs to be done, but also internal to our own policies and practices. So, very good. Thank you. Moving on, I just want to also flag that we will, that later this evening, Chief of Schools John Davis and Interim Chief of Operations Dr. Lynette Washington will give us an update of where we are in our review of school safety, both in terms of where we are with, not only with equipment and readiness at that level, but also with regard to school protocols. As you all can imagine, prioritizing security measures for an entire school district while maximizing limited resources is a huge but necessary undertaking. I really want to thank publicly Chief Davis and Dr. Washington and their collective staffs for their leadership and extraordinary efforts in really moving this essential project forward. We know that the Board had prioritized this level of update, and I just want to thank staff for getting us started. We know this is not the end, but it is really a jump-off point for us to really more closely monitor where we are as a district in terms of our safety measures. Additionally, this evening, we will receive a first reader, I believe, from our new Director of Equity, Dr. Tracy Durant, who led a, what I would say was really an exemplary and very thoughtful and reflective community leadership effort around the formulation of Baltimore City Public Schools Equity, First Equity Policy. And then finally, I would like to say a few words about the priorities that drove our thinking on the proposed FY '20 budget. Because I do think it's important that not only the Board understands, because clearly they will be voting tonight, but that also our public understands. As I have said before, a budget, while this may not be all that we know our young people need or deserve, a budget is still a representation of our decisions about prioritizing and funding essential goals, even within these parameters of limited resources. One major area of focus remains the blueprint, and this budget reflects the importance of continuing the progress we've already started achieving by expanding our support for the priorities we've identified. The proposed FY '20 budget funds our second cohort of intensive learning sites, adding 21 wholeness sites, including social-emotional learning and restorative practices, as well as 20 literacy sites. This investment will bring our total intensive learning sites to 96 schools in just two years. Additionally, we will support our staff with continued professional development for literacy coaches, as well as social-emotional learning in our wholeness sites, and de-escalation strategies district-wide. As part of our focus on equity and quality academic offerings, this budget funds the expansion of advanced placement courses to all high schools. If you look three years ago, we really had decimated advanced placement opportunities that were highly charted and aligned to zip code across the city. So you'll see an expansion of that with the goal of, in three years, every high school within Baltimore City offering advanced placement courses. You'll see an expand, expanded access to Algebra I and eighth grade, which we've made some gains in and will continue to invest in. New curriculum in computer science and a significant increase in fine arts certified teachers. And we have increased the opportunities for meaningful professional development tied to the curriculum and supporting early literacy. We've also implemented our STEM plan, including partnership in the Be More STEM Network, supported by standards-aligned professional learning. Finally, reflecting our emphasis on connecting our schools, students, and family, we have combined the offices of Family Community Engagement, Communication, and Enrollment into a new Office of Communications and Community Engagement under the leadership of Chief Tina Highcubbert, to better reflect the critical role that families and communities play in the success of our schools and students. These are just a few of our strategies and initiatives funded in the proposed budget. Because an effective budget is more than an exercise, it's an accounting, it's also a roadmap for investment. And it should align, and this does align, with the priorities of our plan to try to provide or to work to provide every student in Baltimore City with a quality education. And that concludes my remarks for this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Santelisis. With that, I'd like to do a preliminary review of the consent agenda. We won't vote at this time. If there's any items to be pulled, we will then statewide, so the staff can prepare. And after the public comment, we'll see if there's any additional items to pull. First item, the fiscal year '20 budget, we of course will pull for a full presentation on that. Next item, 8.02, Policy ICA, second reader on the school year number of days and holidays. Under procurement, item 10.01, Franklin Covey Client Sales Leader in Me. Excuse me, item 11.01, Cintas Corporation. Item 13.01, J.F. Fisher Incorporated for HVAC at Thomas Jefferson Elementary Middle. And finally, item 18.01, I think I said that wrong, the other one was 13.01. 18.01, Pi D LLC for the printing, coaling, packaging, and delivery of the back-to-school packets. Okay, so everything will go by consent. We will vote in two sections, because Joshua will vote on the Policy ICA. Okay? Okay, with that, we will go back. Start with three of our specially recognized groups. Our first guests and friends are from the BTU. I believe tonight we have Neil Ross. No, we'll wait to the general public comment, if that's okay, Regina? You, oh, we'll, oh, I thought you were getting up to speak.
No, no, no.
Oh, oh, you were just shifting in your seat.
I'm shifting in my seat, I'm sorry.
You, you, you absolutely didn't have to apologize. You did nothing wrong. I saw you move, and I thought you wanted to soap and, all right. You're good. BTU, I'm Neil Ross, and I believe, is Lakeisha Purnell with you? Wonderful. Oh, and a future BTU, a future Baltimore City student.
I'm starting pre-K registration today, right?
That's right.
Early registration.
Oh, that's right, that was on my announcement.
That's right.
What a cutie pie. Whatever you, whatever you, please.
Okay, well, I'd rather get this over with. So they sent me here today, but with the planned script, I guess they don't know, you know, they don't trust me to, you know, make something up on my own. But anyway, Madam Chair, Dr. Santelisis, and members of the Board. My name is Neil Ross, and I work for the Baltimore Teachers Union. Surprise, surprise. So they sent me here today to talk about our School Safety Task Force. And it's quite a large and diverse group. So the members of the BTU School Safety Task Force have spent five months, meeting monthly, discussing and dissecting and developing measures to help strengthen the code of conduct, the school culture and climate, and creating templates for training for students, classroom, educators, and other staff. We have taken the time to do this methodically to ensure that we get this right, so that measures are taken in place to dispense consequences for students who assault school employees, students who bully other students for their race, religion, sexual orientation, or any other factor. Consequences for students who bring weapons to schools and use them to inflict bodily harm. That we have policies in place to address the alarming incidences that have happened at school-related activities, such as athletic events, the proms, and things like that. Finally, our last meeting for this school year is May the 10th at our office. And I have a special invitation for the CEO. I was told, don't forget to read that part. So we invite you. And I would imagine anybody here is invited. Let's see, not labor relations, though. Thank you for your time. I always have time left over.
Do you like to add something?
No.
No, her. No, dude, I know you're done.
Oh. I don't want to add anything. I want to subtract.
Now you're good. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Berkeley?
So the meeting on?
She always has a question.
The meeting on May 10th, what time is it?
Usually starts at nine, it'll be nine o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be quite a large group. And that, what they're doing is finalizing everything. And they've, they've been meeting as groups, and I guess they're going to put it all together. So they sent me here to talk about that, but I'm not on the task force. So.
Commissioner Chinia?
Mr. Ross, I am, I'm on one of those groups.
Yeah, you are there. I see you.
And that, that is the day that the groups are going to do their report outs.
There you go. Would you like to come here and talk?
No, thank you, you did a great job.
She's good, she's good. She got it, she's good. And I guess it's at the BTU headquarters. Great, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the invitation, Mr. Ross.
You're welcome. You're always invited, you know that.
You can report back that you read what you were supposed to.
I thought it was on video.
It is.
Okay.
Everything you just said was captured for all of eternity.
I hate being on video, but I guess I didn't have a choice.
You are so funny. Our next guest is Ms. Phillips from CECC, Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, CECC.
Well-deserved spring break, but we back to work. I am, had an opportunity to visit a group of young people from Baltimore that I had never heard of before today. It's called the Baltimore Metro Council. And their responsibility is resources, coordinators for children with special needs who are graduating between 18 and 21. And they asked me to be part of their board, so I'm officially a part of it. I am so excited to, to say that these group of people are very passionate about those with disabilities. I felt it in the room. The atmosphere was very positive. And moving forward, since there have been a lot of changes in the state level away, funding is going to be centered around children that's graduating at 21. So we have to look forward to working with them and that we will secure the funding that's necessary for the children with special needs that are graduating between 18 and 21. I will give you more information about it as we move forward. My second Monday meeting, which will be May 13th, we will be having Jessica from Human Resources, I don't want to mess her name up, Papaya? Papia? Also Shannon McIvers from Family and Community Engagement. We have Mr. Chip Woods from St. Peters. That's an adult learning center where children who graduate and they find joy for them in the community. It's located downtown Baltimore. If anybody interested, we'll be happy to have you at that meeting. Also, we have Ms. Shavet Barfield from Parents Place of Maryland, who has a wall of resources for those who receive special ed services or have a disability within Maryland. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Phillips? Thank you, always a pleasure. And now, we have several students from the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City, and I might, I don't want to get the names wrong. Maybe Joshua, you can help me. Caish, Caish?
Caish.
Caish Curtis, Tori Legaspi, and Amu Bolade?
Omo Bolade.
Bolade Odoian?
Yep, you got it right.
Thanks, nice to see you again.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Omo Bolade Odoian. And this year, I am serving as the Event and Fundraising Coordinator for the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City.
Hi, my name is Caish Curtis, and I serve as the Treasurer for ASCBC this year.
Good evening, my name is Tori Legaspi, I serve as the President of ASCBC this year.
Tonight, we would like to speak about the future of ASCBC. Firstly, in the coming future, we will be conducting a General Assembly at ACE on May 23rd to elect the new Executive Board for ASCBC.
So as I'm sure you all know, the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City is the student government organization for all Baltimore City public high schools that provides students with the exposure to political events on a student, local, and state level. This exposure helps to cultivate student leadership within schools and communities, college readiness, and general leadership skills. At the General Assemblies we host, ASCBC offers student leadership training and a space for, space for students to discuss current issues in our schools and the larger community. At the Maryland state level, our students collaborate with state student leaders and represent Baltimore City as the innovative city that it is. Additionally, ASCBC engages in advocacy on behalf of the district. For example, ASCBC traveled down to Annapolis to testify in favor for increased funding per Kerwin commissions and to rally for our schools at the March for Schools event.
As our membership has increased every year for the past three years, we expect to follow the trends in the coming year. To continue offering our services and even on a larger scale next year to students of Baltimore City, we ask that the Board keep in mind that our, keep in mind that as our increasing funding needs, we also are increasing the student involvement.
Say that last part, I just, I lost that last part, as, as you're increasing something?
Oh, we ask that the Board, keep in mind that as our, as our student involvement increases, that also our, our funds, funding needs.
You, you, yeah, you're, you're, you know what it is? You're trailing off at the ask for the money. So, so what I want you to do is, I want you to say that part really strong and forcefully. Yeah, we're ready for it. We're ready. Go for it.
As our student involvement this year increases, we also ask that the Board keeps in mind that our funding should do the same.
So, we're not going to make, we won't, we won't make decisions in this setting, but I will tell you that, that budget's tight for everybody, so that's not a news flash. But we, we will take a look at this, we will work with you, and we hear you. And we, and it's been a terrific, it's been terrific to see the, I don't want to say reinfiguration, I haven't been long enough to know the ups and downs of it. Some of us have seen it over the course of time, because you've been in the system a long time. So it's our desire for this, this body to continue to grow and be strong. So we hear you. And I'm glad that you said it, and I'm glad you made her say it again. Or that you asked her to say it again.
Maybe it was planned.
Comments, questions? Thank you, thank you for coming. With, with that, we are going to turn to general public comment, as is generally our custom, when we have elected officials come, we ask them to speak first. So I'd like to invite Delegate Regina Boyce. And are you Delegate Rick Metzger?
That's close.
How do I say that?
My colleague.
That's not how you say that?
Rick Metzger.
Oh, I thought I said that. Okay.
You did good.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, I should say, first of all, and thank you so much for having us and allowing us to speak this evening. And I want to also thank you for the opportunity in the past to provide a letter of support for Monarch Academy. I just, I'm here today just to really ask for your consideration. I just, I'm here today just to really ask for your consideration for whether it's pre-litigation conversations with Monarch of Baltimore and the Children's Guild with hopes of reaching a settlement in the matter of Monarch's closure. Because I believe we have not only new information, but just different type of commitments that would help bring a different conversations to the table. You know, the Monarch Academy, of course, is in the 43rd District, and of course, I've been following as much as I can, just coming out of session closely, what has been happening with Monarch and do understand the reasons for the decisions. However, I'm not sure I understand those reasons to close the school. The school is an important asset, not only in 43rd District, but for the Coldstream Montebello, Homestead Montebello community. I have become aware of some new information regarding the evaluation of Monarch Charter School by Baltimore City School System and through an objective and kind of a critical evaluation of the scoring system. It indicates that, you know, charter schools may be scored differently in, than other public schools in the city. And this somehow, I want to be careful of my words because I am here respectfully, that maybe negatively not only impacts Monarch, but other charter schools. And, of course, as you know, the evaluation tool, and it's focused on the Low Park scores were the main drivers for the decision to close Monarch. And I just want to insert my, my, my piece in here. I am the Director of an Adult Education Program where folks come in and they're assessed, and they're assessed, you know, at very low levels when they come in. I don't want to say low levels or at educational functioning levels that don't match, of course, their age or their experience. And as they come in and we give them their instructional hours, and as we give them the tools they need, of course, their assessments increase. But if you're 35 and you come in at a fourth and sixth grade educational functioning level, I can't expect you in even an intensive program of six weeks of, you know, 100-plus hours to be at a 12th grade educational functioning level. But what does happen is that they do increase. The longer they stay in the program, the longer they commit it, they do increase. And I think in some of the cases, Monarch is an example of, of just that. A lot of individuals coming in at lower educational functioning levels, not necessarily on grade level, but also increasing. I just wanted to say that. But also know that I've become aware that Morgan State University is willing to partner with Monarch and the Children's Guild to improve its academic performance by establishing an improved system for evaluating children, especially in urban school settings that have different issues, given, of course, community, home life, and location of a residence of a child. I have spoken at length with Monarch representatives and know they have taken this renewal extremely seriously, and they truly want to help the students and the families that come to Monarch, of which most of you know they come from all over the city. And based on, of course, these new developments and MSD's willingness to provide extra funds to help Monarch improve academically through state's comprehensive school improvement plan, I am requesting that, respectfully requesting that the board commissioners authorize their legal team to explore settlement opportunities with Monarch so that no one has to wait on a judicial determination. This would ensure that the Monarch, their families it serves, and the community can remain intact. I humbly ask that you agree to a meeting with Monarch, the Children's Guild, Morgan State University's Department of Urban Educational Leadership, and Coldstream Montebello's Neighborhood Association to create a plan acceptable to both Baltimore City's school system and Monarch to renew its charter. And, you know, I want to also just close by saying, you know, a statement was made to me that the school system does not make determinations based on economics. And I 100% understand that. But I, I would argue that schools have everything to do with economics. Good schools or schools and a good community can change a community. And when we think of families that, for instance, moved to Roland Park, or they moved to Medfield, or they moved to Federal Hill, or Mount Washington, or Hamilton, Laurville, or Mayfield, they moved to those communities because of the schools. And in turn, those communities have occupied homes, walkable amenities, and assured development because people want to live in an area with good schools and amenities. Chum was told that if they can get a good school in the community, because they already had a couple, that they would see development in a community they hadn't seen development in decades. The community boasts two of, I believe, four, two of, two out of four, four-star schools. And of course, a charter school has become a destination for many families across the city that are looking for an educational opportunity. And I ask, what happens to those students now that they cannot attend Monarch after its closure? Those that were bussed every day to the school, that's economics. What happens to the development of affordable rehab homes in Chum area for families to move into? A project Monarch has begun and wants to continue. One house was already sold in Chum. Those are economics. What happens to, as I, you know, I mentioned before, the school system, you know, if they have to close, there's an over a million dollar investment that was made in a rehabbed industrial building that will now be closed, and closed in a community that, again, has been struggling. That is economics. You know, the community-school model, for me, is not just something in name, but a place where a school serves not only its students and families internally and within the walls of the school, but outside of the walls of the school. That means that they are work, willing to work on assuring that barriers to education and educational attainment can be removed. And that model is community, the community surrounding the school, not just the communities in the school. That's economics. And then I finally just want to say, you know, what happens when all of this goes away? And there isn't an opportunity for development and growth of a community that has been waiting for well too long. It's economics. And all this leads back to the fact that, to a school that needs an opportunity and a partnership to serve the children, thereby serving a community in need for economic development. And I believe while there are two additional, or four additional schools in this area, this school is potentially key to change a neighborhood. And so I thank you for your time. I certainly thank you for your consideration of my testimony for Monarch. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Boyce. Appreciate it. I appreciate that you came.
Thank you.
Delegate Metzger?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and like you, Madam Superintendent, I feel refreshed. I looked outside this morning. I looked in the mirror and I said, I think I need to mow the lawn, so I got the razor out and shaved. So I feel refreshed. So, my colleague here is Regina, I hope you have heard her heart this evening. As I come for, on support of Monarch Academy, I have some constituents that are very involved with Monarch. An analyst on the process of Baltimore City Public School System utilized a decision not to renew Monarch Academy was conducted using publicly available data and data provided by the Baltimore City Public School System and Monarch Academy. Upon review, it is very clear the tool and the process are fundamentally flawed and neither statistically valid or reliable. This analysis concludes the process is not fair, transparent, or rigorous. The academic evaluation method is not fair because it relies extremely upon heavily just one year of the previous four years of operation, 2017 and 18. It relies only on one test, the PARC test for math and English. Language and art administered only once per year and only to a fraction of the school's students. It relies completely on a percentile rank comparison of PARC's assessments. It relies on peer groups based on a narrow range of percentage of economically disadvantaged students and completely dependent on the district's constantly changing definition of what makes a student economically disadvantaged. It ignores the state of Maryland's own evaluation system, the STAR system, which awards all public and charter schools between one and five stars in comparison of schools statewide. By the way, just to slip in, I voted for the Kerwin. I was one of the very few on the other side of the aisle that voted for the Kerwin Commission. This, the academic success evaluation method is not transparent because the formula for how the district includes does not include the school's charter comparison, the list of its members, and school's comparison group, which entitle the basics of academic analysis. The reasoning for the specific range of economically disadvantaged bands created by the district to create peer group is not presented in the report or available. The definition of economically disadvantaged that district used to create the comparison group is not presented in the report or nor any publicly available report. Also, the definition appears to change over time. The academic success section contains several assessment points, but it does not say what each carries and how many points that school would need. Developing or effective, non-effective, to achieve the renewed recommendation in the district's own model. Monarch has achieved developing multiple categories. It is not clear whether the selective schools or the schools within the redistrict attendance zones include, excludes from the analysis. It does not provide the formula for how it creates percentile ranks. It creates and cuts scores for percentile ranks for academic success, but does not identify the cut scores it appears that the school needs to exceed half of its peers to achieve, which is not effective. The charter evaluation method is not rigorous because it does not take into the account of key aspects of the school's contributing to the academic performance. It does not use the key information of the use of its own analysis of a teacher-principal effectiveness, the school performance measure. It relies essentially on one test a year and one aspect of that test, the average scale score. It relies only on two points of the time with one test gauge to achieve its trends. It creates and it cuts scores based on the percentile ranks. It makes cut scores and appear on half of the school's rank of not effective in every measure. It does not provide the way for school determine what it needs to meet its annual targets because it completely depended on the annual rankings. What a school needs to do is to succeed is cannot be mathematically determined at any point in time. Based on the above-mentioned characteristics, Baltimore City's district method for evaluating academic success of charter schools is neither valid. And I will tell you again that Monarch Academy, I've been there several, several times, and when I see a parent coming up to me and says, Delegate, please tell them not to close our school. Delegate, my child has been on a misbehaved track for too long. He came here, and in just one year, he cannot wait to go to school. He cannot wait to wake up and go to school. His homework's done, he's complete, he's dressed, he's neat. Then one morning, I went in on an unannounced visit. These children, seven, eight, nine years old, had a, an assembly, and they took their hands, and they had their hands, and they was to it. I learned something, I'm 65 years old and learned something about the vortex of the brain. Controls your emotion, it controls your sight, it controls your, your, your actions, it controls your speech. And what those children learn is they're growing up, that all these actions that they learn can be fundamentally helpful in their future. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm a preacher, so I'm going to say this. I plead the blood of Jesus Christ to keep Monarch Academy open. God bless you tonight.
Thank you, Delegate Metzger and Delegate Boyce. Appreciate you coming. Our next guest is Gregory Gann.
Push it, okay. I'm a board member of Monarch Academy, and the last time I was here was on the infamous night of January 8th, when we got the vote not to, to be renewed. And we've taken that vote extremely seriously. And the delegate was referring to a report. We hired an outside consultant, a national specialist who looks at metrics and, and testing and evaluations of district as well as charter schools, really across the country, but, but to a large extent in, in this region. And, and you heard the delegate talk about those, those conclusions. And, but I will say that the, to, to that consultant's, in that consultant's report, instead of being not effective, we were being, we were evaluated as being developing effective and even highly effective. And because of that, and that has been the, the backbone, if you will, or one source of our appeal to the state. We don't want to litigate this. We want to remain open. Our, our teachers are committed to the school and our students, we've had very little attrition in, in the school, folks who want to leave. And we know we're the largest charter in the city, and we have nearly a thousand students who are, notwithstanding the fact that they've gotten word that our school is closing, and notwithstanding the fact that they're being instructed to meet with counselors to consult with what alternative schools they should go to, they don't want to meet because they don't want to see this, this school close. So in addition to, to that report and our taking this as seriously as we have, I also want you to know that we were, since that, that January 8th vote, eve, or the evening of that vote, we've also learned that we've been selected as a comprehensive school improvement target by the Maryland State Department of Education. And we would receive assistance through the University of Maryland system to improve academics over a three-year period of time. And in addition to that, Dr. Wilson, the, the President of Morgan State University and other leadership there, has toured our school and is willing to forge a partnership with our school to collectively increase and work on our academics and, and increase our, our, our performance. So the gist of it is, is that, I don't even know how many of you who sit on this board are... All right, make it best for everyone. But it's a 40-page report, and I have with me plenty of two-page summary copies. I'd be happy to give them out, okay? And the, the point is...
Thank you, Mr.
Is I just hope you will review this?
You need to wrap up.
And we would like to settle.
Thank you, I lost track.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question. What is the status of the appeal for the... Would we not know that? It's, that was the answer, thank you.
Our next guest is Keisha Goodwin. Excuse me? Is that Keisha's?
Yeah.
Keisha, you can start, we're good.
Good evening, CEO, Chair, and Commissioners. Today, today I am here as a parent. I would like to start with thanking the science team for their patience and for being courteous even when I may have ruffled some feathers. Also, I would like to thank the ID guy, went in, took a new ID, bam, out of there. I would like to thank the secretaries when I go into the offices, always on point, very courteous as well, and other staff members for continuing to be nice. Today, I am really here to speak about a recent presentation I saw on the graduation requirements. They were specifically talking about Algebra II. As indicated in the meeting, Algebra II is offered in 58% of the school districts, but is not mandated. According to MSD on page two, three credits are required for math, but two are mandated, Algebra I and geometry. The district is aiming to mandate Algebra II. I am recommending that the third math credit be a choice of the student, such as business finance, economics, trigonometry, et cetera. Similar, science requires three credits, specifically chemistry and physics. The third credit should be the student's interests, such as marine biology, aerospace... such as marine biology, aerospace, forensic science, et cetera. Baltimore City schools have a 71-ish graduation rate that may drastically increase if you follow the recommendation and also increase the per pupil funding and weights for fair student funding. So a lot of schools do not offer these extra math courses and science courses because they do not have the funding to pay for staffing. Given that the last graduation requirement meeting was canceled, is there an upcoming public meeting to discuss graduation requirements? Also, I would like to point out that assessments for graduation requirements on page four, it says a student shall take the requisite Maryland High School assessment during its next regulation, regular administration, if the student received credit for taking by the method identified in Regulation Point 03 and Point 04 of this chapter. Any of the following courses align with the Maryland High School assessment. One, algebra, two, science, three, English or government. Just wanted to say that before my time was up.
Chief Connolly, do you know the answer to the question?
I was just checking with the team and at this time, we do not have another meeting coming up. But we can loop together and figure that out based on the information you've shared with us tonight.
Yes, this was updated February 26, 2018, as stated on a document.
Terrific. Any questions for Keisha? Thanks, as always. Pleasure. Our next guest is Kim Truheart.
Three minutes is not enough. I love this time of year, this budget season. And my first comment is Baltimore City has not committed enough in its preliminary budget to Baltimore City Public Schools. As I read it, it's flat from this year to next year. And $278 million in contribution from the city is absolutely inadequate. And so I will be demanding increases. And I hope all the citizens in Baltimore agree with me. Baltimore Police are again receiving the bulk of the funding in the city. It's approaching 50% of our budget, which is outrageous. The other glaring opportunity is that the current year budget, 2019, in Baltimore City has a $33 million surplus. Has the school board asked for any of that? Because what I see out of the 33 million is nine, over nine million, going to the police. That's outrageous. And I hope there are enough people listening and watching tonight that they show how outrageous that aspect of a $33 million surplus is. We need more for our schools. I have asked, I have demanded of Acting Mayor Jack Young that he establish an emergency task force on youth engagement, such that we can develop a strategy to engage our youth in positive opportunities this summer. That task force should be stood up by the 30th of April, Jack Young, such that we can meet during the month of May to work out what the strategies to engage our youth are. Over 15,000 young people applied for summer jobs. The city's proposed budget only funds 9,000 jobs. 15,000 applied, 9,000 funded. That's absolutely ridiculous. Now, what I've heard from the mayor's Office of Employment Development is that approximately 12,000 of the 15,000 have made it through the screening process, which means that we still need funding for an additional, no, 3,000 children. I want that to come out of that $33 million surplus. And I'm saying these facts such that you guys can repeat them, you can tweak them, you can Facebook them. I need y'all to be the advocates that you're supposed to be right now. We need funding for 3,000 more children to have jobs this summer.
Thanks, Kim.
2.5 million? Sounds like a nice round number. One last point.
Quickly.
Security and safety. I really need this process to be inclusive. I think there are lots of people who want to participate in making our schools safe places. And I don't see any movement in the inclusive arena yet.
You will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Y'all got the numbers right?
We got it.
278 million, 100, you said 278 million dollars.
That's the flat.
Didn't increase.
Did not increase.
Not by one cent.
Not one cent.
No, ma'am.
And that makes no sense to me.
I don't think so either.
None whatsoever. We got to work on teaching, I need a math teacher at City Hall. Got one? So, so, because, because... Well, yeah, but we can bring one to City Hall during this time of year. Because it's obvious, they can't add, they don't understand math. But we're going to help them.
Can't you help them?
I'm trying.
Thank you, seriously, thank you. Our next and final guest is Sierra Smith.
Hello. Excuse me, I'm nervous. So, in these three minutes, I want to just let you know what's going on. So, a few years ago, I relocated my entire family from Baltimore County to Baltimore City, where my children were drafted into a language immersion school here in Baltimore City. They've been attending that school ever since. And I apologize to them. Since being at the school, my child, my children have been harassed. They have been interrogated by other parents. Excuse me, I'm sorry. They have an IEP. The IEP, nor the IEP plan has been implemented. And my children are not safe at this school. Due to these following things, my child is failing. He is not failing because he's not capable of doing the work. He is failing because he doesn't have the support. I'm so sorry. I need assistance, I need help, I need answers. I understand that there's a process for progress and I've been trying to follow the process. Thank you. I haven't been getting any responses, any answers, any phone calls, any follow-ups. I have exhausted all of my resources and I need assistance.
Go ahead.
So, you know what, we're going to have, are you finished though? I want to give you time to collect if there's something else you want to say.
I can't even go through it, it's okay.
So, a couple of things. One, we have our executive director of Special Education Services here, right? Who's right behind you. And she is going to assist. Have you, could you just briefly, and I don't want to make it too difficult on you, and so it's okay if you don't want to do it now. But do you know which, have you just made your concerns known at the school level? Or have you gone to the central level, or?
I've been here. I have, I have used the Parents' Response Team. I have used the Special Education Team, they know me by name. They know my child. I have filed a complaint on the Maryland website. And I have getting no response. What I usually get when I come here, that's my three minutes.
That's all right. You're into our questioning time, so you're good.
Okay. What I usually get when I come here is I give the problem or I give my concern, and the concern is given back to the school for the school then to address me. So, right there, it fails. Right there, it fails. My child, quickly, my child was chased down by a parent and forced to take pictures. The school did not notify me, nobody told me but my child. And he's a boy, so he don't think it's bad because he didn't cry. So when I went to the school, because he's a volunteer, the guy that did it, he's still there.
Okay, so there's, so there's a couple issues on this one?
Oh, there's several.
Yeah, there clearly are. But let's, but let's start here. And I do think that once we get into legal territory as well, we need, we need a different tier of follow-up. So what I'm going to ask for, I'm going to ask, one, let's start here. But I'll ask for a report to me and to the Chief of Staff around what actually all the issues are and what the subsequent follow-up will be.
And I just wanted to flag too, that I just spoke with our Chief of Schools, John Davis, who said that his, one of his staff people, the principal supervisor, has been working with the school on this. So Tracy Carter, so she is going to follow up with you tomorrow to connect with you as well. But so, I just want to connect her as well because she's already been working with it too.
Okay, so I think what we need to do is given who's already been looped in, right? So if there's already been contact with special education, I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and we're aligning, right, all of the different entry points. And again, particularly, I just draw particular attention to if there are legal implications, we definitely need to make sure we get on that as well. Not that the others aren't important, but I want to make sure we get a whole, whole response. All right?
We have a couple, we may have a couple of questions. Commissioner Frank?
Yeah, this parent has come here tonight because she was unable to get a response at the levels at which she should get response. And so I would ask Dr. Stansilis, in addition to learning what the issues are and learning what the follow-up will be forward-looking, could you please look backward-looking and get a sense of what happened so that she found herself here tonight to make a case to you personally?
Absolutely, Commissioner Frank.
My thought on that comment is that it's unlikely that this is isolated. So we need to understand the system. I saw, it takes courage to come, right? And we're not particularly scary, but this is kind of like when people have tried everything, we're usually the end of the road. So I think we want to look for some of the system. You really are good, we're not going to... You passed the hard part, you're good. No, seriously, I think we want to keep an eye out for some systemic issues too. Commissioner Bondima?
I want to thank you for coming. I, and I also want to say that our CEO will definitely, and the staff will definitely, don't go, will definitely take care of all of this. But because you have presented to the board, I'm hoping that we will get, find out the results of this. Because we're feeling as emotional as you are, so we would like to get information. I'm sure we will. But everything will be taken care of, okay?
Any other comments, questions? Again, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, you had to come.
That concludes our general public comment. I'd like to ask the board if, based on public comment, are there any other items that you'd like, are there any items that you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? With that, we'll do the consent, vote on the consent agenda. We'll do it in two parts. First, I'd like a motion to approve item 8.02, Policy ICA School Year Number of Days and Holidays. This is the second reader, motion. Commissioner Frank, second, by Commissioner Hassan, all in favor. Commissioners Lynn McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Kishani, Frank, Berkeley. Motion passes 8-0 with two absent. Now, I'd like to have a motion to vote on the remaining items on the consent agenda, all of which are procurement items, items 10.01, 11.01, 13.01, and 18.01. Moved by Commissioner Chinia, second, by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Kishani, Frank, Berkeley. Motion passes 7-0 with two absent. With that, we'd like to invite staff to present the fiscal 20-year budget, fiscal 20 budget.
Good evening, John Walker, Interim CFO.
Hi, Jeremy Renshiner, Chief Human Capital Officer.
And we're here tonight to make a presentation and ask the board's approval for the fiscal year 20 operating budget for Baltimore City schools. A lot of this presentation was, is a lot the same as it was the last time, so we're going to go through it relatively quickly. If there's anything that you would like us to stop, we're welcome to do that. The budget landscape, as we explained the last time, the old formula is still in place. Our revenue is flat from the prior year. Flat's not good, but flat's better than less. So our expenses continue to increase, our salaries increase, our contractual services increase, and our revenue is staying flat. So that puts us in a position where we have some real challenges in getting our budget balanced. With identifying priorities, there were no, there was no need for significant reductions identified in budgets. So budget planning began with a certain priority setting. We had school-based vision meetings that we held throughout the schools. And then we had a district-level meeting series, an online survey, to solicit responses. This is a little slide about Kerwin, we went through it the next time. These are some of the funds that are potentially available as a result of the legislation that was passed. That legislation has still not been signed by the governor and we are still trying to figure out exactly what it means and how we'll be able to use the funding that we've received. So the budget that we are presenting tonight has a placeholder in our fund balance that is higher than we anticipate it will be in the end. However, we want to make sure that we present you with a balanced budget and we will be coming back to you at some point in time once we've been able to sort out the legislation to request a supplemental appropriation which would allocate those additional funds. This next section is a little bit about allocating resources to improve student outcomes. This is the vision of the blueprint, as we had talked, leadership, literacy, and student wholeness. These are the key actions for implementation of student wholeness in fiscal year 2019-20, with 21 new intensive learning sites, 21 new student wholeness specialists. There'll be at least one social worker for every school, and professional learning and restorative practice, de-escalation strategies, integrating social and emotional learning within classrooms. For literacy implementation for 2019 and 20, we have 20 new intensive learning sites, 20 new literacy coaches, and professional learning on English-language arts curriculum, and steps towards the adoption of a new English curriculum for grades nine to 12. For information, 2019-20 and leadership, the key actions in this budget are a continued investment in the New Teacher Institute and extra support for new teachers in high-need schools, district office fellowship program, and a focus on recruiting and retaining black teachers, as you saw the presentation earlier. This next section, we go through real quick. We went out this year and we tried to go to the community prior to the formulation of the budget to get their ideas of what their priorities were. And this is a slide that just shows the top... And this is a um, a slide that just shows the top priorities and some sample key actions that were taken into consideration as a result of those community budget meetings. The next part, we go into the financial section. We'll talk a little bit about revenue. As we know, our our student student funded enrollment has been decreasing over the last several years. And in a uh, in a state where both our state funding and our city funding is based on uh, on the number of students that we have, that can be problematic. Our total revenue allocation for fiscal year two thousand twenty uh is general funds, our flexible funds of one point one six two billion dollars. Our special funds, which are primarily our restricted grants, Title One, Title Two, IDEA. And then our enterprise funds of fifty-five point three million, which is our food and nutrition fund. This next slide just gives you a fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty comparison of our major revenue uh revenue sources. And as you'll see, it's relatively flat, um, with the largest increase coming, as I said before, in the proposal to increase the amount that we take from fund balance from fifteen million to twenty-two million.
John, could you just, I just want to point out the decrease in federal revenue?
It's it's federal general fund revenue, which is the rate.
Okay.
And 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 the rate is actually going down.
Okay, great. Thanks.
This next slide just gives you the the funding formula for the state, and it just gives you, this is all the categories of the state funding formula. The two I pointed out are the ones in green are the ones that are the result of the three-year bridge to Kerwin funding that we have received. This is the the third year of that um, of that legislation. So that's the dollars that we've received for that. And then the one in yellow is the hold harmless amount. Um, technically, under the state funding formula, the district would have gotten less state money in fiscal year twenty than it got in fiscal year nineteen because of our declining funded enrollment. However, the governor put uh eleven million dollars back into the budget to hold us harmless and to hold us flat from fiscal year two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, so we wouldn't have to face a declining revenue in uh in state funds. The special sun, special fund summary, as you can see, it's a hundred and five million dollars for fiscal year twenty. And these are the some of the major grants that are included in the special funds.
Uh, excuse me, John. Commissioner McFadden?
Quick question about the whole harmless adjustment. So how does the whole harmless adjustment impact uh potential Kerwin um money that we would receive?
It 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 won't because this hold harmless was given to us prior to the Kerwin, potential Kerwin money that we will receive. And it's hold harmless in in the old Fortin funding formula. So as a new funding formula comes into place. With Kerwin, it'd be a whole new funding formula, and it would be a whole different set of.
Thank you.
Uh, this just gives you a a little breakdown of the Title One summary from fiscal year uh sixteen to twenty. And you'll see in fiscal year twenty, um, the estimate is for approximately fifty-five million in total, twenty Title One allocations with approximately thirty-one million dollars of that going to uh one hundred and twelve schools. Uh, the other revenue sources, as I as I said, are our enterprise fund, which is our food and nutrition fund, and our contribution from fund balance. Now we go to the allocations or the appropriations in the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty. The general fund is the one that we speak about the most because that's where our flexible dollars are. Uh, our budget is one point one six two billion with seven hundred and eighty million dollars going directly to schools and three hundred and eighty-two million, which is centrally budgeted allocations, with the majority of that also going for school supports. And we'll see that in a later slide.
All your pie charts. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. This just gives you an idea of the school level process that was gone through in order to for the development of the budgets. Um, this is just a graphic that pretty much tells you how we went through the school level process, how schools got from the beginning to the end in in the preparation of their school budgets. Uh, this is a little bit of a breakdown of the seven hundred and eighty million dollars that goes directly to schools. Three hundred and thirty-three million goes through the fair student funding formula and is allocated based on that formula. Two hundred and fifteen million is in what we call locked funds. That's for students with disabilities, for making sure every school has a principal, um, ELL teachers and and those sorts of things. And one hundred and thirty-eight million dollars is allocated to charter schools, uh seventy-six million for unlocked s- uh students with disabilities. Fifteen point seven million is allocated for alternative option programs in schools. And we have another two point four million dollars in targeted funds. This next slide just gives you a um, a graphic of the change in the base per pupil for the last four years. And we you'll see that the base per pupil for traditional schools is recommended to go from fifty-five forty-three per student to fifty-five ninety per student. And from charter schools, from nine thousand two per student to nine thousand one hundred eight dollars per student. This next slide just gives you a breakdown of the district office and what their allocations were in nineteen and what they are proposed in fiscal year twenty. This next slide shows you the breakdown of uh the general funds budget. And as you can see, the little thing at the bottom, approximately eighty-two percent of our general fund allocations go either directly to schools or are budgeted centrally on behalf of schools. And you can see on the graphic how that's broken down. And what you will see is that our central office is actually only seven percent of our general fund budget, which has been shown to be relatively low in uh in the state of Maryland as a percentage of overall allocation.
Could you just repeat that again, given that we have a communications outlet in this city that likes to communicate the direct opposite? Could you say that again, Mr. Walker?
The percentage of our central.
Not Talia's, of course.
The percentage of our general fund budget that goes to administration has been um, has been shown to be one of the lowest ones or the lower ones uh in in the state. So we just, we don't spend a whole lot on central administration. I mean, I think we're pretty much in line with other districts.
It's also relatively low compared to si- similar districts around the country as well. And in several, considerably lower. Um, in fact, people are astounded we can do half the work we do. Just as a general budgeting eh eh for organizations of any sort, seven percent's a low number. So you you're picking up the drift here, everybody? Yeah.
Yeah. And if you see the the second green one there where it says school supports budgeted centrally, on this next pie chart, we just kind of broke that down to give you an idea of of what that is. And you'll see that a um, large portions are transportation, um, utilities, um, certain CAO contracts. And and non-public and um out-of-county living arrangements is also a central centrally budgeted for schools.
These next three slides are a review of what you saw a couple of weeks ago, so no new pie charts. This shows that our the organization of the district office uh looks very similar to what it for FY twenty looks very similar to the way it looks now in FY nineteen, um, with the exception of the addition of one new division, which is the Communications and Community Engagement Office. And again, that division is uh has been created by combining uh the Communications Department um, and um, uh, Communications Engagement, which used to be in the Executive Office, and the Enrollment Choice and Transfer Department that was in the Academics Office. This shows our change oh year over year um across offices of centrally funded FTEs or or personnel. Um, one uh note here is within the Academics Office, again, the increase there um actually reflects the twenty-one new student wholeness specialists and twenty new literacy coaches for our schools. And um, uh, it doesn't go up by forty-one because uh some other positions were reduced for FY twenty. Uh, the Communications and Community Engagement Office here, you see, has thirty-four FTEs, which again came partly from the Chief Executive Office and partly from um, uh, partly from the Academics Office. This slide shows among all of those FTEs that are funded centrally, how many of them actually do most of their work here in the district office? And how many spend either all of their time or eighty percent plus of their time um in schools or in the field? Uh, so if you combine the fully in schools in the field with the eighty eighty percent plus, um, nearly six hundred of the roughly twelve hundred FTEs that are funded in the district office actually spend um all or almost all of their time in the field.
Lynette Washington, the interim chief oper- uh operations officer. So for the facilities component, I'm just gonna go very briefly through. We have three funding sources for facilities. Some is state and local bond funding, and then the other funds are general funds. So for state and local bond funding, we have the Twenty First Century Program, which supports uh twenty-six to twenty-eight new schools. Then we have the general funds that supports our maintenance budget. And most of our strategic work around maintenance and how we have an additional three million dollar commitment uh for maintenance over a nine-year period of time. We use um various standards, and so one of them is the Association for Physical Plan Administration standards of how we um are targeting our staffing and also our resources uh to reach particular goals. Uh, and so here for this particular year, we're not building additional staffing in maintenance, but we're targeting towards contractual works or increasing HVAC uh contractual work and then also contract maintenance, which are your roof doors and um other systems. And then the last one is the um, again, this is uh state and local bond funding, which is our capital improvement plan. And that's the program where we support uh new construction and also systemic projects. Uh, our local funding is about um nineteen million. We've received seventeen million over the last couple of years. For the last two years, we received nineteen million, and so that's also to support our CIP program. And then lastly, we're receiving additional funding from the state to support various initiatives. So about fifteen million are going towards heating and repairing systems. And so we can definitely provide transparency around that list of those twenty projects. Those are basics systemic repair projects that are about a million dollars. And the a timeline range from six months to eighteen month completion. Uh, then we also uh received additional uh thirty million in twenty nineteen, and we'll receive this uh again in twenty twenty for uh healthy school funds. That thirty million is for all local school systems. Um, any school system can get up to fifteen million. Um, and this is to support anything from doors, windows, anything that addresses safety in uh facilities. And then the last one is one that we'll talk about in a more detailed around the school safety um funds. And for Baltimore City, we received about a million dollars in twenty nineteen. Um, there was ten million dollars that was given across the uh state to support school safety. I think that's it.
Doctor, quick, quickly, Dr. Washington, that the slide before, the healthy school facility fund grant, how much of how? So is it fifteen million per year that you can ask for? Is that fifty million per fifteen million per district over the course of the how however long the grant is awarded from the state?
Right, so the state has provided the thirty million allocation to all school systems for twenty nineteen. And then they we've seen it in the budget again for twenty twenty. And any school system can get up to fifteen million. And so that's again for twenty nineteen, so Baltimore City could request up to fifteen million for twenty nineteen, and then again for the next year, twenty twenty.
But overall, throughout the state, there's only thirty million.
There's only thirty million throughout the state.
I have a few other questions.
We'll open it for questions, and we'll start with Commissioner McFadden.
The budget amendment that would come after um, the the current all of that, does that have to go before the city council also, or is it just something that we would vote to adopt that amendment? Or those amendments?
Supplemental appropriations the um are voted for here. We send them to the city council for their um, just so that they know that we've done it. But there's no vote required at the city council for supplemental appropriation.
So it's just something we, great. Um, also for the sake of the public, the per pupil spending um for what is it, what uh traditional school students versus the charter school students? Would you just explain the difference? Because there's roughly three, three to four thousand dollars per pupil indifference indifference that we see there.
Yeah, there's a couple of things there. Um, our traditional school students receive more services from our central office, whereas charter schools, you know, do not. That's one thing. And there's also certain locked funding that is taken care of, that takes care of things like principals for schools and so forth that is not part of the allocation for the the fifty-five ninety that they receive. The fifty-five ninety that they receive is their uh, what we like to call their their flexible funds. They're the ones that they're able to use to design their programs and design their individual budgets. There's additional funding that that happens at the central office for our traditional schools. Whereas at the charter schools, they are responsible for doing some of those things on their own.
Thank you. I remember that being new last year. I had that question, why is there such a difference? So I just wanted to make sure that that was made aware again for the sake of the public, and I appreciate that. Uh, also, with with the budget that we are planning to um vote on tonight and adopt, we have a new equity uh officer or director that works in uh the CEO's office. And with equity being such a an important part of the work that we do in this system and in the city and and in regards to the blueprint, don't really see that much support within that particular uh office or branch of the the CEO's uh office. So I I just want to I I want to be clear about our intentions on how we're going to support that equity work and how we're not really seeing that um in what is presented to to us tonight. I think it's important for us to have more conversations about this, how we're going to support that work, the work that we are all involved in. I think it's kind of, it's not kind of, but it's very difficult for um a person to really work with an office of one and potentially two people to kind of support the work of equity throughout a district that has more than seventy students and and it ten thousand employees roughly and families that are impacted by all of what we do. So I think it's important to flag that. I'm gonna flag that. Um, I'm not sure about how much we can do with that tonight. I don't know if the CEO wants to add to that. But I think that's um important. For me, when I'm looking at the budget and I'm looking at all of the work that we've done to adopt the policy, all of the work that we've done um with curriculum and black teacher recruit, I mean, just all of the the things that we're doing, how do we support that one person or two people to kind of organize what we're doing as a a district? Where we where we plan to move as a district? I think that's important.
No, and I I think you're absolutely right, Commissioner McFadden. And so what I would say to that is, one, um, in conversations with Dr. Durant, one of the things that that I committed to, um, given, you know, and knowing the board's support for this was that in her year one serving in this position, we would work to add uh to begin. And I want to say begin, not that that would be the end, with an additional two FTEs in addition to her own. Um, one of those you will see reflected in the budget for the coming school year. The other we had hoped um initially would be funded um through private philanthropy. That has currently not come through. Um, so that just means that we um, including myself, need to figure out ways to be able to support um that additional FTE. And in conversations, again, with Dr. Durant, this was not that, you know, we had a prenup or anything, but um, one of the things that that I think she was very, very clear about, and I'm saying this publicly so she knows that I remember. Um, one of the things she was very clear about in her decision to come on board. Um, and we've received nothing but rave reviews from everybody um who has met Dr. Durant and worked with her. Um, we committed, I committed, to over the long term, making sure that we built that office to be able to do exactly what what I know you are describing and what the board has made very clear is a priority. So we see this as a starting point. And we we have also even had some initial um, you know, initial inquiries from other Phil and Propic partners about the 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 ways that they can help support. So that that's a long-minded way of saying we're working on that. We have a trajectory. This is just the beginning of the work. And it also goes to some of the discussion we had earlier um and that, you know, Chief Walker started with. And that is when, you know, things are flat funded and to be frank, we were actually, it was a mild win that we could flat fund this year. Because at one point, we weren't sure that was even going to be possible. Um, at some point, you know, we have to be able to um, we have to be able to fund these other positions. And that that's why I even in a very, what my grandmother would call a cheeky way, made reference to um, you know, some of frankly, the the false narrative, and I know that that's. And I know that that's a common piece, but you know, I mean, we could say it's a misrepresentation. We do not have a bloated central office. 80 to 85% of the people who work in this district work in support of schools and at a school level. Now, yes, are we working on more effective, you know, more effective staffing? Are we working on increasing the capacity of our staff? Absolutely. But this idea that we are bloated, we are probably bloated, you know, in relation to what plantation staffing look like, but with regards to a public school system, we are not bloated. And so I think part of what we're going to have to, you know, continue to wrestle with, with advocates and supporters and everyone else is, you know, you know, my job is to make sure that we are still doing right by kids and we are still improving our practice. But to your point, you know, we can't have a paltry equity office if we're saying that equity work is one of the primary things that, that we have prioritized as a district. So again, sorry for adding more cheekiness, but it is what it is.
I appreciate that. And two, several commissioners have said this or stated it before, we don't have a development office or person within our district. And not to add additional work to anyone that's working in the district already, but I think that there are ways, a person who works in the nonprofit sector, perhaps we can get folks to write grants for specific things and give them a percentage of whatever. I mean, there are several ways to think about it, but I think that we do need to have someone kind of focused on looking at those philanthropic relationships and building them so that we can do what is best for children in this city. I think that's important. And then finally, fine arts. I saw the fine arts initiative money, and I asked about this before, and I didn't really get a clear answer about it. With what we're doing in the arts in our district and thinking about wholeness, student wholeness and all of what that means, it's not really clear within the budget what is being allocated for fine arts outside of the initiative, the Fine Arts Initiative, whether it's coming from, I don't know, academics, whether it's coming from several places. It's not clear for me to see in the budget where those resources are going at the, at the school level. So that, that's something for me. I think I asked about that before and I didn't see it. I'm not going to hold up the budget because of it, but it is something that I'm very passionate about, actually seeing that and the transparency of how we're using money and the resources to kind of fund those wholeness supports and services and instruction for our students outside of what we see presented.
Got you.
Want to piggyback on that comment. Maybe Commissioner Hassan was going to say something too. I appreciate that comment, and I, I would say that this has come up a number of times with this board as structured now. The student wholeness work is, it's essential. You know, we're all about social, emotional, like, there's no debate about the way we talk about it. But I'm really craving more comments, build-out, inclusion of things like arts, athletics in the student wholeness section. I'm saying this because I'm looking straight at you, John, because you're the budget guy and you're taking notes, and that's lovely, but it's a larger comment. I spent all morning at, at three schools that share one campus, and they were working with volunteers and working with each other, and, and they were building raised flowerbeds and weeding and planting and, they were leading, right? This was a student wholeness activity at its best, right? And I think that, I'm not saying I want to see school greening activities in the budget. That's not what I'm saying at all. I just think that our, our language around student wholeness, I, I would like to see us be a little bit more, a lot a bit more intentional about beyond the social, emotional. I think there was such a long time when we didn't, there was like a, almost ignoring the social, emotional needs and hoping that they would just be able to read and write without attending to their social, emotional needs. So I think we, we had a lot of catching up to do, but, you know, we're sort of, we're on track to, to do well and to expand those sites. So I just would like to see us, in the language, include that a little bit more.
Well, and it was also part of the design of the blueprint to make sure that we were not only attending to students' social, emotional needs. And there's been some push, you know, and folks wanting us to talk about trauma more. And, and quite frankly, it really was, and, and the board was very supportive of this, an idea of also talking about the kind of enriching experiences young people to have versus everything being responding to some kind of deficit that they have. And the arts and athletics and other elements in the budget are part of that.
And you have this amazing initiative going on. I've seen this referenced a couple of different times, not, not in here right now, but the, the work with Under Armour and the Ravens and the Inside Out Initiative and the coaches. You have a stellar leader of your athletics department. I mean, it's, and that's all about better connecting the coaches to the academic side of the house. That's like slam dunk, not to borrow a sports metaphor, on how student wholeness could really be more inclusive of that kind of stuff, because it's just a different set of adults that, while we don't call them wholeness specialists or staffing the wholeness room, I would argue that, that, that set of adults is as important. So it's more about the language than the budget. I have one other question. I tried to digest as best I could the, the numbers, and I don't think I fully have, but I, I don't have problems with them. There's just one thing that jumped off the page at me. And transportation has been kind of a vexing problem here for a long time, and it's been a hard cost center to control. But I noted on the detailed table, for what it's worth, on page 49, in FY '18, it was roughly $46 million. It went down in last year's adopted budget to roughly $40 million. And now it's back up to $49 million. What's driving that?
Part of it is when we did the fiscal year '19 budget, we were negotiating our new transportation contracts. So we really didn't know what the cost was going to be, and we knew it at the time the budget went through. And I think we even said that we may have to come back for a supplemental at some important time, once those contracts had been negotiated. I think that was the, the biggest driver between '19 and '20, is we didn't know till after the '19 budget had been prepared, what those contracts were actually going to cost us.
And I just, I guess, on that, to Dr. Washington and to Allison, do we anticipate that the Transportation Working Group, that some of the ideas and things coming out of that, do we anticipate, has there, has there been something that's come out of that, maybe Ops has already looked at this, that we think might shine the light on some ways to control that budget or save some money in that budget? Because that's a, it's been a, this is my sixth budget, and that, this is a kind of a thorn in our side, always.
So I don't, I think the working group didn't present a lot of recommendations for significant cost savings, but they provided recommendations on how we can provide more oversight and control of contracts. And so some of the information that we pulled from the working group actually was included within this new contract about malage and a number of different things.
Good. Thanks.
Just, a lot of their recommendations were also about service improvements and quality of services to individuals, not as much about cost control. There was a lot about contracts, about enforcing the contracts, so that was helpful. But I will say that this is a cost that is difficult, difficult to control, not just for us, but for school districts across the country. It's one of the leading cost drivers for a school district, so we're not unique.
Yeah, it's been vexing, to say the least. Other comments, questions? Commissioner Hassan?
So one of the greatest things in the world is when your colleagues say what you need to say, so you don't have to keep beating the same drum. So thank you all for all of that. Thanks for the, the really hard work that you all have put in, the conscientiousness with which this was approached from the leadership level. I would just like to reinforce the need for a development, to look at a self-sustaining development office over time, even if it is given the charge of, of you have five years to pay for yourself or refine new staff, something. And especially specifically how that impacts the offices within teaching and learning that provide some of the encore content. So specifically talking about within the arts, we are, talking about a skeleton staff, but the arts is community engagement, the arts is a recruitment tool, the arts is how we change the narrative publicly. And so if we had even to begin with a seed of a development office within the arts office that just simply pursues funding to support quality-certified arts teachers in schools and arts experiences for kids, I'd say the same prototype could be added within health and physical education, as well as within social studies in the curriculum to ensure that it is representative of our students and helps with the wholeness from the academic teaching and learning perspective. One question, and it's a little bit weedy, and I don't necessarily need a complete answer, but since Commissioner Kishani brought up the gifts from Under Armour for uniforms, did the athletics budget then stay flat? And if so, what do we get to do? Are we expanding to middle, middle school? Are we increasing options? Because that was a significant chunk of savings by us not having to spend money on uniforms. So do we know how we're going to leverage that to improve quality of athletics, opportunities, extracurriculars?
So I think, I think I'm right, but you should correct me if I'm wrong. I think that a lot of the uniform replacement is done at the school level. It's not in the central budget. I could be wrong about that. So I don't think that it's savings here. I think the schools would have benefited from that savings, and you're right, it is a significant contribution and, you know, incredible opportunity for us to have that paid for by Under Armour. But I'm pretty sure that that was, the replacement was generally budgeted at the schools, school level.
So then that would just simply impact the school's general funds, not necessarily be targeted back to increasing enrichment opportunities or extracurriculars for students.
Other questions, comments?
I just want to be clear about something that Ms. Truheart said earlier with 50%, about 50% of the budget going toward police. She was referring to the city and not the school system.
I'm looking at Chief Hamm, he's like...
I just, I wanted to be clear with that.
Yes. Chief Hamm has suffered the same type of tight budget that everybody else has, so he's been living and doing the outstanding work he's doing on a very, very tight budget.
With that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the FY '20 budget. Moved by Commissioner Berkeley, second. Second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Kishani, Frank, Berkeley. Motion passes 7-0 with two absent. I want to say that there's a reason why this is such an anticlimactic budget, budget year. Last year at this point, we lamented the absence of participation in some of the budget sessions, and it was Commissioner Chinia who said, well, why would anybody come? Because by the time you invite them in, it's kind of a done deal. And so the, the staff response by moving the whole process up earlier in the year and letting people get inside the heads of the chiefs on what they were thinking and ask for community priorities, I think that's reflected in the, sort of the generally smooth budget. It's hard. I'm confident that you guys have put a lot of work in, but from our standpoint, it was smooth and anticlimactic. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have two presentations under information discussion. First, we'd like to invite staff to talk to us about the school safety update.
Good evening. Lynette Washington, the interim chief operations officer.
John Davis, chief of schools.
Chief Hamm, school police.
So this evening, we are going to provide an overview of various steps and initiatives that the district has engaged in in order to address safety in school security. One of the things I do want to flag is that it's very much still in development and refinement. What we're going to briefly talk about is some of the funding supports that we're receiving in order for us to move forward with some of the safety work, and then what improvements that we're, we'll be making for FY '20. So the governor in 2018 announced the Maryland Safe to Learn Act, and under the Maryland Safe to Learn Act, there were a number of different funding opportunities for various school systems to seek in order to support some of their safety work. And one of the main ones that I'm going to talk a little bit about is ones that we used to address some of our capital security improvements. This grant was provided, about $10 million that I spoke to, to before in the budget process, about $10 million were provided to all school systems to address some of the capital security improvements within their facilities. For Baltimore City, we received about $1 million of these funds, and a lot of it was based off of enrollment and the size of your school system. We were alerted within this past legislative process that that funding had been extended all the way to 2020. So an additional $10 million would be given over a six-year period of time in order to support this. And so after understanding that that funding would be extended, then we can better go back and refine some of our security plan processes about how we spend the capital funds for, for our facilities. And so just, as I said before, our allocation was about $1 million. So for the last fiscal year, the way that we spent the funds was that we, it was broken down between 26 schools, about 15 schools received lockable classroom projects, and another 11 schools received security surveillance upgrades. And the way that we did this was through a prioritization process. So early in the year, we surveyed schools. We asked schools about all of the security issues in terms of interior door locks, exterior doors, CCTVs, about door entries. And so from that survey, we cross-referenced it with a lot of the data that we had on the maintenance side in terms of work orders of schools requesting different work and repairs to their school security equipment. We worked with school support. It was a very collaborative effort. We worked at ITD to ensure that they could support some of the equipment that we would be adding to the schools. And then we also did a survey of metal detectors and also for cameras. And then based off of that, that's how we came up with the 26 schools. We basically prioritized schools that had the greatest needs, but only, we only received $1 million. So that fund only went so far. The other funding source that the state provided was also for school safety evaluations. And this is something that the district is in the process of completing, and this is going to help us for the next couple of years of funding about how we direct and target our funding. This is a basic assessment of a facility, the building, the grounds, to make a determination of what were all the security hazards and issues within that particular facility with input provided from the school community. And so just from a capital perspective, the way that we're phasing some of the funding that we're receiving from the state in terms of support, is that for the last year, we focused on locks and surveillance. For this upcoming year, we're focusing on some of the visitor security procedures that John is going to talk about a lot more in detail. And then we're going to be using the school evaluation surveys, which is a more detailed deep dive than what we did, which is the preliminary assessment and survey that we did with the schools. It'll provide us with a little bit more insight of how we target the other funds for FY '21 through '24.
Beyond the capital security improvements that Dr. Washington talked about, there's also a number of safety improvements on the school level we want to put in place. You can see the four items listed on the screen. And really, this came down to the survey that Dr. Washington talked about, also talking with principals, talking with school managers and ILEDs, figuring out kind of what was feasible for this upcoming year. And really, we came up with ensuring that we have a district-wide visitor security procedure, installing surveillance cameras at the designated single point of entries for each school, installing metal detectors for our secondary schools, and also hosting more school safety conferences at the central office. I'm going to talk a bit more in depth about each one of those four. For the visitor security procedure, it's important to know that we do have policy KIA around this, but we want to provide additional guidance so that there are step-by-step procedures that each school will follow so that visitors are vetted before they even come into the building. And once they do come into the building, we know that we also have to improve, I shouldn't say once, but when they come into the building, but even before that, we have to improve our signage. A lot of schools, when you go to them, it's unclear where a visitor should go into, and there's a number of doors and a number of entries. So we know that we have to improve our signage, and we need to do that across the board. But even, even when you come into the building, sometimes the, the main office is not right where you walk in. And so we have to provide schools with better signage around that. When we talked with principals about it, they were, they were very happy that we were thinking through this and really making sure that we direct all visitors into one area. And I say that because we also have to tighten up our... It doesn't happen across the board as well as we would like. And so that whole visitor security procedure is one that we are going to tighten up. The camera surveillance systems are pretty self-explanatory. We want to make sure that there is at least a camera at every school for right where visitors walk in. So again, we want to make sure that in granting them access, we've got enough eyes on that area. Some schools already have that, but some do not. For the metal detector part, right, we did our survey, and there's about 30 or 31 functional metal detectors. But frankly, that's not enough for our secondary folks. And so we're going to work towards at least having two at each site. We might have to adjust that a little bit depending on how big the school is and really what their needs are, but we know that we're going to have to make an investment in that area. I want to talk a little bit about the metal detectors because we're going to focus on the secondary schools. And I don't really think that is an indication of the students per se. I really think that is an indication that when we look at the data and when we look at the situations...
Can you define secondary schools? Thanks.
Yeah, this is our high schools, right? If we can, we'll extend that to our three middle schools, right, that are traditional. But for the most part, this is directed towards our high schools.
And does this include charters? How does it, I just, I don't have a preconceived notion of whether it does or doesn't, but when we're talking about these, implementing these practices and policies and cameras, and where do charters fit in this?
I mean, so I would think that it would because this is a grant, so typically grants are not part of the general fund, so they should get access to grants like anybody else should. So I would think that, for sure, if they're in our building, I guess we have to think about it a little bit, but if they're in our building, for sure it would. Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yep. But we're starting with our secondary schools because the situations that have flared up a lot of times aren't really student-related, but they are with our visitors or our communities that come in. And we want to make sure that we are responsive to the places where we've seen different outbreaks and different situations that occur. And so we're going to start with our secondary schools, start with our high schools to be specific. And then as we have funding available, if we think we can go into the elementary space, then we will do that as well. And then lastly, we want to host more school safety conferences at central office. This is something that I don't think is seen very much by the public, but there are many, many mediations that first have to occur on the school site. But when schools think that there are situations that are more volatile and more confrontational, we want to make sure that we have people at North Avenue that are dedicated to having these types of conferences. Frankly, these are the things that can get out of control and that frankly cause security issues in a school. Right now, we have school managers, we have people from ECT that kind of do this, but they do this with their other jobs in mind. We want to work towards having a full-time employee working on this and frankly hosting more of this so that things that could escalate on a school site are taken care of here centrally. Again, this was another thing that when spoken with, with principals, they would love to see this type of support so that, sure, they always have to do some mediation on the school site, but when they think something is escalating and can be a security concern, they can give that to us more readily. They already do that now, again, just to be clear, but we want to have a full-time employee on this so that we can even do more of it. And again, I think that will take some of the security burden away from schools.
Question from Commissioner Hassan.
So I just, I don't know what best practices are around this, but I'm guessing that folks in mediation and conflict restitution or transcendence may have some input on bringing it to central office, and it may be detrimental to have the conversations here, that we may want to look at a, a community space to be the place where it happens, if it needs to happen outside of a school. I'm just not sure that the idea of taking a restorative event and moving it to a surveillance situation is going to be helpful in the long run. So just to throw it out there, I definitely understand the need to protect principal schools and students in situations where escalation is anticipated or, or potential. But I also think that it might undermine the process. So looking to some experts who, who do this work all the time, at some best practices and how to find, find the healthy balance.
Right. And I think even if we were to do it here, right, we do have the re-engagement center that I think most parents, when they have used it before, think of it as a welcoming place. So I think your point about making sure whether it's here or someplace else, it has to be a place that parents and family members feel safe to come to. So, and we should get the experts on that to get their best thoughts.
Yeah, because if it's about rebuilding community, then taking it out of community to make that happen is already setting, setting a level between the two.
Yep.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes. With the secondary schools, Chief Davis, you mentioned high schools first, and then we have middle schools. So are we starting with the high schools for metal detectors to ensure that they all have those installed?
Yes.
And then we're looking at the traditional middle school, and then the K through eight, which also has middle school students there, and then the elementary schools.
Yes, and I think when we get to the K to eights, we'll probably look at different pieces of data because some of them have had more points of escalation than others, and we'll make sure we prioritize appropriately. But yes, the way that you just talked through that is the way that we are thinking through it.
And that's another part of my reason for, for asking. We're looking at data points to support what schools are in need of certain resources and what schools may not necessarily need those resources. What about ALIS training? I know that we talked about it before, and I know that we mentioned it kind of at the city council hearing. The two of you were there. But I remember us hearing, and it's active shooter training. Are all of our schools trained on active shooters?
I can start.
In addition to what I do know, there are several drills that every school has to have, right? So not trying to add any additional work that happens, but we do need to be proactive in how we're keeping everyone safe in our buildings. So it's a question. I know that several other districts have adopted a systemic mandate and training and invested in ALIS training. I know Baltimore County has, all of us have to be trained in ALIS, not just a school leader or school resource officers or for us, school police. Can you talk a little bit about that, Chief Hamm?
Yes, Commissioner, and to your point, we've already started that training. We wanted to start with the school leaders first, but we plan to roll it out for everyone and even through the C, the community learning networks as well. So we are in the process of that. We had three ALIS instructors, two of them left, and we had to get two additional people trained. And they, they're T for T, or trainer, trainer, so that they can certify staff on that. But we're working through that to try to roll out it for everyone.
Are we paying for that ALIS training? Is it something that had to come through procurement, or is it by a school, by school basis, or is it coming from, from what you're doing? Because I know it's not free.
Initially, the Maryland Center for School Safety paid for three of our folks to get trained.
Okay.
But the last two that we've gotten trained, we, we incurred the cost as a district.
Commissioner Bondima?
Yeah, thank you. I know we're talking about the schools, but I've also sort of have not heard unless I missed something. I always say that because sometimes I might miss some information. Are we going to install metal detectors here at, at the central office? And are we going to give training here at the central office? Because we, sometimes in different locations around the country, we, they are susceptible to incidents. I haven't heard anybody say anything about this building at all.
Yes, we're thinking through that. I think right now, the current thinking is that we will install metal detectors here.
I'm, you're saying we will, there's no plan to do that?
Yeah.
Because we have...
I think we're prioritizing schools at this point, so we're prioritizing the high schools. But then we are, part of the reason why we're talking about having one central location for these more volatile conferences is to have a place where we can make sure that there is a metal detector both for, because if we put them in place in secondary schools, that would take care of high schools, but we would still have middle, elementary schools that don't have metal detectors. So for that reason, we would either put one at the re-engagement center if we did it there, so we had one place where we can do them, you know, with a metal detector, or we would have them at the entrances, but we're still thinking through that.
And I, and I do understand, I'm real clear on that. However, this office in this building, we welcome people from all over, and they move in and out, and in and out of the building. And I'm really surprised we don't check, like, maybe we do, I'm not sure, but because we have students, teachers, and employees coming and going, I would think that this should be one of the number one places that we should put a metal detector and, and do some evaluation on the security in this building.
Commissioner Hassan, Chinia, Frank.
Since resources are not unlimited, where do the alternative learning programs fall in, in safety as far as, are they just lumped in with secondary schools?
Yeah, they're with the high schools.
Okay. And approximately how many of those are going to be outfitting?
Uh, we'll give them what they need, just like the high schools. So if they need two or if they need one, we'll figure that out based on their population. They'll get what they need.
Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Chinia?
Yeah, one, one of the areas, and I, I read through this earlier, that I still don't see that, I think is still a pretty important area, is around athletics, especially with secondary schools. So has there been any discussion about that, especially the events that take place after school and weekends? Being a person that attends some of those, especially those basketball games.
Yes. This has been brought up before, so directly to your question, discussed, I would say yes. I think we still have more work to do on it. One of the things that was brought to me is just where families and community members stand during basketball games and being way more precise on where people can be during a game. Obviously, you should be in the stands, but I've heard some of that feedback as well, and I think we have work to do on it. So I thank you for bringing it back up.
Commissioner Frank?
Thank you. Just a few questions. Are the metal detectors and cameras funded in this budget?
So those would be funded through the school safety funds, the state funds.
And it's one of these sort of necessary but very sad conversations to talk about metal detectors. So will, will our kids enter the school through the metal detectors?
I mean, that's something that we're going to have to take on a school-by-school basis because the, the biggest issue with metal detectors isn't just buying them, it's making sure that we have the people there in each school to staff them, right? And so, you know, again, as we talked with principals about this, they love the idea. They want to make sure their people are trained, and so we'll work with Chief Hamm's people to make sure that we do train people, but we've got to figure that out on a school-by-school basis about how we can do that.
Yeah, and you know, this is so far from anything I know anything about, but I imagine that there's a psychological effect of our kids and our visitors and our professionals will undertake, whatever the decision is, whatever the decision is, whether they go through or don't go through, but seeing the metal detectors, whether they go all the way down to K through eight or below. So I would just ask that we consult the research on what this means. What have other districts learned from the deployment of these, hardening of our schools? And, you know, there is, I, I think the evidence out there is probably provocative when it says that these things generally don't work, but I would suggest that you consult the evidence and see why they're saying some of these things don't work. And at a minimum, I imagine there's unintended consequences that we haven't thought about that others have. So I would just encourage us to really challenge ourselves on what we're doing, consult the evidence that would suggest it doesn't work and does work, and make sure we're doing everything we can to do it correctly. And the other thing I would ask is, well, one question I would ask Chief, Chief Hamm is, what, what is done in the city to prevent our students from getting illegal guns and bringing them into our schools? And what percentage of the guns that we find, I have, I assume it's rare, are illegal?
Right. So it's prohibited from a juvenile for possessing a firearm. So that's, that's a crime right there just for a juvenile to have a, a firearm. I think what we've done and what we've learned in the last two or three years is that by building quality-connected relationships with our young people, they're able to feel like they can share, not only with the police, but with adults in the school. And so of the many instances that I can tell you that we've recovered firearms in the last three years, probably over 20 guns in the last three years, most of those instances were with little or no force. They were through a conversation with the administrator and the police officer, or, or just the administrator or the staff person, just being able to have a relationship with the, with the young person, and they just give the, they just give the weapon up. And a lot of it is about protection in the neighborhood, has nothing to do with school. It's all about them feeling safe, getting back and forth, not only with a gun, but with a knife or what, whatever kind of weapon that they had. Has no intention on bringing any harm in the school, but just getting, having that protection. So I think through relationships, I think through social media, when kids see that it may be harm being brung to the school, they screenshot the social media stuff, they tell adults, and then we act on it.
Well, you mentioned social media. That's, my final question is, it seems what we're doing is devoid of technology that might be out there that could anticipate and prevent or mitigate these occurrences by the digital realm. And we talked about this a little bit, of whether or not the technology exists where we can monitor the transactions either among the email or around the perimeter of a school so we can identify a threat before it happens. So everything we're doing, I imagine, works, but the other thing is, what, what is out there that we haven't considered that will bring greater safety to our kids in the technology realm? And you don't have to answer that now, but I would encourage you to think about what's out there that might work. And if the state, if the governor's grant doesn't cover it, then we should ask the governor to cover things that are not currently being used that are innovative, that we might want to employ.
And Commissioner, to your point, I'm very aware of several social media monitoring companies, but we have to think about fiscally if, if we can afford to pay for it. I know it's important, but a lot of those companies, they charge a lot of money in order for us to be able to use them. But, but what I can also say is that the police department does have a social media monitoring unit that does contact us on a regular basis. When certain words are put in on social media, like a fight in a harbor, Mondom and stuff like that, they monitor that stuff and they forward that stuff to us when they see it. So there is, the police department does have a, a monitoring unit in the Watts Center where we send somebody every day at dismissal. We send someone there. MTA police has someone there, and a detective from Baltimore City Police Department, Criminal Intelligence Section is there every day, and we're all on the same channel, monitoring what we see.
Well, monitoring 70,000 kids or even on a pilot basis, something less than 70,000, I imagine is more precise than a citywide...
Right.
...monitor that may or may not pick up juvenile. That's all.
But we'll take it back, Commissioner.
Commissioner Lynn? You, you, okay. Commissioner Hassan?
So last summer, Young Organizations of Maryland piloted during their SALA a cellphone case experiment. Mr. Kasamo has talked to us a few times about his concerns of cell phones. What this product was is it, it's a little bag, and the kids put their cell phones in, and it locks. And then each teacher in every classroom had a device that looks a lot like when you go shopping, and they take the security tag off. The kids could just touch their bag on it, and it would open, and then they could use it for academic purposes and put it back in. I don't know if we've looked into that. I don't know if it would be completely cost prohibitive, but it would allow cell phones to be in the possession of, of young people, but not be usable unless they were being used for academic purposes. So it's something to consider that's been brought to our attention here and that anybody who's hanging out with young people knows. and put it back in. Um, I don't know if we've looked into that, I don't know if it would be completely cost prohibitive, but it would allow cellphones to be in the possession of, of young people, but not be usable unless they were being used for academic purposes. So, it's something to consider, uh, that's been brought to our attention here, um, and that anybody who's hanging out with young people knows. A wildfire will spread a message quick. Cellphones are started faster, so. They also were able to ask the staff, so all the teachers and, and all the aides and paraprofessionals also had to put their phones in, so it created a really different engaging learning environment in some of the spaces.
So, thanks. We look forward to the next installment of, of this, because I think it'd be nice to just be consistently kept up to date and appreciate, appreciate the thoroughness of this. Thank you.
Thank you, team.
Our final presentation tonight is Dr. Durant, um, the first reader of, for the proposed equity policy.
Good evening. Uh, good evening, commissioners and chiefs, and certainly Dr. Sanzalisis. I am pleased to come before you this evening to bring forth the draft of the equity policy. I'm seated behind me, and then there are some task force members who are seated in their seats, um, are members of our task force, which I'll introduce shortly. So, just some background, which I don't need to give you, because in June of last year, you all held a board forum on equity, and there was conversation about whether or not we needed to go forward with doing an equity policy. I say "we," I wasn't here at that time, um, but I joined shortly after this. So, as I understand it, when the board forum was held, there was conversation about eliminating the predictability and persistence of, of disparities. Following that board forum, the CEO and core program team engaged in sessions where they looked at disaggregated data, focused on discussions regarding racial equity, and then proposed recommendations for next steps. I joined November 19th, 2018, and then in January, launched a strategic equity task force whose sole purpose was to bring forth an equity policy for board adoption. Members of the task force are on the slide in front of you, but I do want to note those who are present in the room. So, we have Chief Sean Conley, who's our chief academic officer, and seated behind me, um, our facilitator, Nikia Drummond from NLD Strategic, Davon Love, Director of Public Policy, Leaders of a Beautiful Struggle, Jeremy Grant Skinner, the Chief Human Capital Officer, and Ms. Kim Truheart. Other members, again, are seated, I mean, are listed on your, uh, slide. Not listed here, but provided support from their respective organizations. Adar Ayera, who attended meetings on behalf of Diane Bell McCoy from Associated Black Charities, and Shantae McKinley from the Positive School Center from the University of Maryland School of Social Work, who attended in place of Dr. Wendy Shaya. The other thing that I want to mention about our task force members is, um, the external task force members in particular have worked really diligently to go ahead and start connecting us, us with funders. So, back to the conversation earlier around getting outside funding to secure support of contractual positions, consulting, and other FTEs. The task force members are already doing that work and attending those meetings. Mr. Love whispered in my ear, we were sitting in the back, "I have a meeting scheduled already to talk about this." And so, the task force members have already been working diligently because they really understand the lift that it's going to take for us to move this policy forward. In terms of policy references, um, we, uh, use the COMAR, which is currently in public comment. 13A dash zero, I mean, .01, .06 is the educational equity policy from Maryland State Department of Education. There is a network of individuals who meet monthly, representing individuals who hold my position or similar across the state. And about three years ago, we started working on a amendment to what was education that is multicultural, which was COMAR 013A 0405. We decided to repeal, ask for repeal of that regulation and replace it with a new regulation, which is the one that is on the slide. That regulation is stated, is slated to go to MSDE State Board on May 21st for adoption. As part of that, uh, new regulation, the new regula, regulation is going to call for every local school system to develop an equity policy and regulations to be reviewed every three years and shall address implementation of the equity policy through its local ESA Consolidated Strategic Plan by September 1, 2019. So, with the adoption of our policy, we will be well in line with what the state is going to require us, uh, to do. The Network for Equity and Ex, Excellence Through MSDE is also working on an implementation guide for that said policy. Also noted here are Baltimore County Public Schools' policy, which was adopted in 2014, Frederick County in 2017, Portland Public Schools, which was adopted in 2011, and St. Paul Public Schools, which was adopted in 2013. Um, the Portland and St. Paul Public Schools are the policies that we use specifically as it calls out race, um, as a metric in the policy. The Aspen Education and Society Program, with the Council of Chief State School Officers, Leading for Equity Document from 2017, was also used in our consideration, as well as the Equity Policy and Platform put forward by Teachers Democracy Project and Baltimore Movement of Rank and File Educators. Um, it is important to note that for these two references, the task force felt that because of the specificity outlined in these two documents, it would be best suited in our implementation planning, not necessarily the language that is before you right now. Community and stakeholder engagement started in, in February. ILED's core program team, our CLN's cabinet, there was a CEO community conversation on equity last month. Um, I went to the PCAB Executive Board, CCAC, and the Charter and Operator Led Schools Advisory Board. There is a presentation scheduled for PCAB on May 16th, um, 2019. In addition to those sessions, we held a series of roundtable and feedback sessions, um, in early March, to include a Saturday. We tried to have them in various locations to give for diverse, um, perspectives. The information that came out of those sessions also are things that we anticipate you will find in the implementation planning, not necessarily in the policy language. As part of our work as a task force, we took some time and looked at purpose statements from other, um, educational equity policies, and then began to name what were the key components in all of those statements. And so, you'll see those in front of you. There's a definition of educational equity, there's a definition call out of the problem and or symptoms. We state and own the district's equity failures. We state district call to action and declares necessary action, and then states the district's mission and/or ideals. And so, those are the elements that other policies had that we felt were well-written, and so, these are the poli, these are the components that you will also find in the purpose statement. Sorry. The key components of the policy standards, these are the major areas that we've indicated based on our work as a task force, based on the feedback that we receive and the community engagement sessions. So, they are as follows: disrupting and eliminating systemic inequities, honoring culture experiences and humanity of students, family, and community, ensuring access and representation in academic programming, and then building staff capacity for equity-based teaching and leading. In terms of implementation, following the adoption of the policy, the task force will be expanded to include additional members. Our first focus will be on developing a three-year implementation plan with particular focus on year-one training and capacity building. The other pieces of implementation, um, we will make sure that we are aligned with COMAR as, as required, um, and as appropriate. The, um, CEO, we're asking, will operationalize the policy by developing an annual plan for training and programming with a timeline to ensure full implementation. And then, we needed to du, to develop an evaluation plan and accountability standards. This is one of the things that came up in almost every community engagement session that we held. How will we hold ourselves accountable for the things that we say we will do? We're asking that each school and district office develop an annual equity priority that is aligned with the blueprint and outlined in the school performance plan, the establishment, establishment of an equity advisory committee, and then an annual report provided to the board, which is actually more than what the state is requiring, um, us to do. They're requiring three years, and we're saying that at least annually, we need to come before the board and talk about what is happening. Since we presented to policy committee, there were a few, um, changes. None, um, that really changed the spirit of the policy. Um, the additional language about the district's ideals wants the work begin. This is in direct response to the feedback offered at policy committee. In other words, what will it look like when we get it right? And so, we took from, some comments from some past board meetings and some of our own engagement, and one of our questions from the community engagement sessions was actually, if the district does this right, what, what will you expect to see? And so, we've added this change in the language as well. We've included partners, um, in places where we, we had not used the word partners. Um, when I went before the Charter and Advisory Schools Board, um, that might not be the right name, but when I went before that group, one of the pieces of feedback that they gave, and they were, it was very strong feedback about the fact that you all are talking a lot about what city school staff needs to do, but this needs to be a requirement for partners that will engage with us, and we would like the policy to say that specifically. And so, we've just added that language in the policy standards, um, in three of the areas that, um, that you see. And then, we just added some language around instructional strategies in one of the additional policy standards. As I said, when we presented to policy committee, um, one of the things that I want to make sure, I say again here, is that we recognize that this is a starting place, not a staying place. There are a lot of other areas of inequity that we will need to focus on, but this is where we need to start, because every data point that we have suggests that this is where we need to start. And until race is no longer a predictor of success, um, we need to focus very deliberately and very intentionally on building the staff capacity to do this very important work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions from the board? Uh, I only have, uh...
Thank you for the updates after policy committee and what you incorporated, I think. I mean, it, it speaks to your leadership and the team that you have working with you, and I appreciate each time that you talk about the work that you're leading. You can't do it on your own. Um, so, all of the folks, all of our stakeholders that are active in this work, I just want to say thank you to you all. And we all just have to continue, con, continue to have these types of conversations, look at these types of policies, and really start to roll things out systemically, not just for our school system, but for the city of Baltimore. I think that we really can be leaders across the country and in our world if we really all hunker down together. Very so, solid, solid, and, and really move this work forward. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, just a comment. When I was going through the slides last night and I saw the advisory group, I thought, well, that's what I would do if I were assembling an all-star team. It's like, it's, it's, I, I was like, "Good, that's good." But I also, it, it, and then now, having the presentation tonight on, um, I can't remember what it was now. Yeah, the black teacher recruitment and retention, I'm sorry, I had a brain lapse. So, whether you're talking about enrollment, transportation, recruit and retention of black teachers, equity, these are big and vexing problems, and I, I think that it doesn't, they don't get solved by turning the wagons in and thinking that all the knowledge exists in. I mean, we learned this last year with Peter Hughes Gilmore. You know, when you're trying to figure something tough out, open up the doors and let people in. Everybody has, everybody's vested, everybody, certainly everybody behind you is vested. They're here all the time on, and working on stuff that know as much as we do about any of these things, so. And I say "we," I mean the royal "we," I don't mean the nine of us. So, thank you for being willing to help, but I'm not surprised that you are. But I'm really glad that it's now a matter of habit, that this system asks people to participate. So, that's, uh, thank you, and we look forward to the next, to the final reader. But as we all know, um, having a policy is lovely, but it's all about the implementation. So, this business about an annual update, yeah, at least, because we gotta keep your eye on this prize, because this country has not been great on this track record.
Commissioner Kashani, I want to say that it also speaks to your leadership, the way that meetings are more open, the community is more engaged. From my understanding prior to being on the board, things were not as, uh, on the trajectory as they are on right now. So, it's definitely a celebration for, for you too, and the leadership that you provided to this board, to the school system, but we, we can't stop here. So, I appreciate, appreciate you, and I'm going to say that publicly, because I don't think we actually do that for you enough, Commissioner Kashani.
And yes, Davon, you can.
Just want to say something briefly, um, two things. One, just to echo, um, the, the comments about, uh, Dr. Durant's leadership. I'm usually really judicious about handing out public comments, because I'm not a give-everybody-a-sticker kind of person.
It's a patient-award kind of guy.
But just the combination of rigorous understanding of what it takes from a practical level, administrative level. You know, it's, the, the school district is really blessed to really have Dr. Durant doing this. The thing that I really want to say, um, is that, given what the policy is attempting to do, in many traditional settings or conversations, particularly about race and power come up, it usually implicates people's job security, right? That's usually like the unspoken theme when conversations about really changing the status quo happen. And so, I want to urge, you know, this board, um, this board of commissioners to provide Dr. Durant the cover that she's going to need, not just in the context of being here at the school district, but just understanding, like, some of the attacks that will come from folks that want to maintain the status quo. And so, I just want to really urge this board and the school district to provide the cover for Dr. Durant to do the work she's doing.
Put well, my, the way I have said this to Dr. Sanzalisis, uh, when things come up, is that everybody's all about equity, until they're not.
And, um, pretty much everybody has, has said what probably needs to be said, but is someone who has never let that prevent her from having comments. I don't want to break my record now. I, I just want to say, kind of the, the first, um, phrase I wrote to myself as this was occurring is that this is well worth the wait. There was pressure to speed through, to get something done, um, to, you know, we just got to put something together, and I think the board's willingness to wait for the right person, uh, for the right process, and frankly, this is still an accelerated timeline, right? I mean, Dr. Durant was really good, and she said to me, she said, "Now, Doc, how fast do you want me to go?" And I was like, "We need to begin training this summer, so you, you need to tell everybody to get it in motion," right? And the fact that, um, she, along with this team, did that in ways that were still authentic, still engaged, folks in the initial part of the conversation, to me, just reinforces this is the right place and the right time to be doing this work. I want to say to our outside partners who are with us on this, as well as our internal folks, very similar to what we heard earlier tonight from the black teacher recruitment, um, and retention group, like, you also, um, have permission, uh, not that some of you need it, but to hold us accountable around the implementation, because that's where it's going to get sticky. And, um, it feels weird to call you Mr. Love, but a, as, as Davon said, right? Like, I think there's another piece of this that is cover, and, and it gets hot in this seat when people's livelihoods, in terms of what has historically been in place, actually get shifted. That's when board meetings, that's when public gatherings, that's when the pressure comes. And so, the fact that we can begin in this way, to me, sets us up to be able to hold the ground when the pressure will come in the opposite direction, because it will come. But the fact that we are starting the way we, we are, the fact that we are committed, the fact that we went there, we called it, we called this policy specifically within a racial equity frame because we believed for this city to do any less would be to mask over one of the gaping wounds that we have yet to acknowledge so that we can fully heal. And it would have been much easier to just have a general equity blanket and to bypass it. And we felt as if collectively, we could not do that and, and actually be able to say that we were heeding the push, the calls, that our community is asking for. So, I look forward to the work, but I just want to reiterate, the press is coming, and I don't mean that press, I mean the pressure is coming. This is actually, even though it was expedited, this is actually the easier part. It's gonna be when privilege shifts, when assumptions and knowledge of how to master the old system don't work anymore. the old system don't work anymore, and when somehow now, what was considered a bastion of assumptive privilege now becomes put in play as a question, and not only a question, but the target to dismantle, that is when the full weight of this work will really become the manifestation of what I know we all wanted to become. So I want to thank you all for the courage work, and if you noticed, it's also to say, you know, the fire's going to get hotter, so don't leave us yet. And let's kind of all bear down together, but I just want to say exemplary work on an accelerated time period, and I'm, like I said, well worth the wait.
Awesome. Okay, with that, I would like to just note the upcoming meetings. P-CAB will be in this room on April 25th at 6:30. Teaching and Learning will be in this room on Tuesday, May 7th at 3:30, that P-CAB meeting is Thursday. We'll all be back together upstairs at 3:00 on May 14th, and then downstairs at 5:00 on May 14th. Ops Committee, May 21st in this room at 10:00. Policy Committee, May 21st at 3:30 in this room. And then, harkening back to an earlier presentation tonight, the Black Teacher Recruitment and Retention Project Report and Recommendations will be here on June 18th from 5:30 to 7:30. We'll have a number of other times to note that, but given the significance of that work, I want to flag it. Anything else for the Go To The Hole? Nice job, everybody. Motion to adjourn. Commissioner Lynn moves second. Commissioner Bundima, all in favor? We are all in favor. Eight, nothing, with two absent. It's a wrap.
Thank you.
Woo! [laughter][1784.47]